Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today, amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, law, and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today, those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect, and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated.
I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I advise that Councillor Murphy will be absent today, and I move that he be granted a leave of absence from the meeting.
Seconded. Has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Gibney, that Councillor Murphy be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The ayes have it. Are there any further apologies? Confirmation of minutes, please.
Chair, I move that the minutes of the 4,772nd meeting, held on Tuesday the 12th of August 2025, be received, taken as read, and confirmed.
Seconded. It has been moved by Councillor Dixon and seconded by Councillor Gibney that the minutes of the 4,772nd meeting of council, held on the 12th of August 2025, be received, taken as read, and confirmed. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any questions?
Shall we start, please, please?
About four. Councillor Atwood, can you turn your microphone off, please? Councillors, are there any questions of the Lord Mayor or a Civic Cabinet Chair of any of the standing committees? Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. My question is to the Chair of Public Transport Committee, Councillor Wines. Councillor Wines, over the last few weeks, you've been keeping the chamber well informed of the Shriner Council and Chrissifouli government investment, record investment, pardon me, in public transport through the new bus contract. Yet, questions on notice today reveal that the lazy labour opposition don't even know what's in it. For the benefit of those opposite, can you please remind them of some of the particulars of this landmark agreement?
Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks, Councillor Toomey, for his interest in this. And of course, he attended the information session that I hosted in this room for councillors so that they may ask questions and learn what is in this new contract. Now, the highlights, this is a landmark agreement, the best version of this contract this city's ever had, with investment from the state increasing from $458 million to $472 million. With an increased proportion of contributions from the state, they are now contributing 75% to our 25%. They now contribute to the Morroan City Glider, they contribute to the Blue City Glider, and they contribute to our PPT services. This new contract will ensure that all new buses will also have full-height bus driver safety barriers. The contract also facilitated the launch of the M1 Metro Line, and the rollout of Brisbane's new bus network. Now, this was all discussed, this contract through with the rollout of BNBN, Brisbane Metro, and the new and more equitable funding split, which have been achieved, will future-proof our public transport network, allowing us to cater for the extra 600 new people moving here every week. So this equates to a contribution between the two governments of more than $630 million to deliver public transport for our city. Now, this was all discussed at length, and we had quite a few questions, and we made ourselves available, which is what I find quite striking about if I can refer councillors to their agenda, questions 19 through 20, excuse me, 20 through 22, which speak to, excuse me, the questions on notice regarding the contribution of the state and the quantities in particular to, yes, that's right, page six, questions 19 through 22. Now, this is about how much the state government provides for buses and metros, an interesting separation that's been made by the Labor Party, one that Councillor Cassidy has for years insisted didn't exist, but in fact, but in fact now, for his new purposes, must exist. So the reason that you would split out the quantum, how much for buses, how much for metros, how much was there for buses, that's the nature of the questions. Now, the only reason you would want to do that, in my view, is a deeply cynical attempt by the Labor councillors to attempt to say there is less money for buses in the new contract, that rather than saying there is net growth in the contract, which there is, what they're going to do, looking into my magic crystal ball, they're going to split buses and metros, and they're going to compare the new bus money to the old bus money, and deliberately exclude metro. And why do I think they're going to do that? Because I refer to councillors to the Brisbane Labor Party's newsletter, Brisbane Now, dated the 6th of August 2025, which speaks to the new bus acquisition. And in that, I refer to page two in this printout, where the author, presumably a Labor Party operative, writes, however, documents show that as part of the deal, 118 bus vehicles will be retired, and 76 will replace them, a net loss of buses in the network. That deliberately excludes metro vehicles, which brings us to more vehicles in the network. Now, Councillor Cassidy, in the information forum, made a point of defining how many new buses and how many new metros. So here in the Labor Party's newsletter, they once again exclude metro vehicles from their published information to make it sound worse than it is. Now, now we see in today's, in today's questions, they're now asking, what is that split? So that, I hear them laughing so cynically. They know they've been caught, this is a sin of omission, they are deliberately misleading people by leaving people, by leaving information out.
They're misleading many people.
And by leaving, by leaving important information out. Now, what that means is that there are now, these answers on notice, these questions on notice, when the answer's provided, will provide three numbers, how much we're getting for buses, separated from how much we're getting for metros, and how much we were getting in the old contract. And I am sure that this Labor Party, led by Jared Cassidy, will attempt to compare the bus numbers and the bus numbers, leaving out metro as they did in that article. The only other explanation is that for all these years, where Councillor Cassidy has argued that metros were just big bendy buses, he now recognises that they are more than that, that they are in fact a superior, better vehicle that carry almost double any other, double any of our bus fleet. So what this means to me is either he's attempting to deceive people by omission, or he knows that metros are better, bigger, and more special.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further questions, Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair, and it's wonderful to have Donald Trump with us in the chamber today. What an incredible response that was. My question is to the Lord Mayor, of course, Chair. Despite introducing a fee to receive paper rates in the mail to cover the cost, your councillors flooded residents with paper this week, including letters about green bins, which some people received twice on different days, incorrect letters to new homeowners despite residents living in those homes for 20 years in some cases, with their waste vouchers, and of course, your vain Living in Brisbane newsletter, which cost residents $1.6 million a year. Why do you waste so much money on PR stunts and mail while you're begging other levels of government to help you save the Story Bridge?
Lord Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Look, we don't waste a cent.
Further questions, Councillor Adamin.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is to the Acting Chair of the Infrastructure Committee. Councillor Parry, I read recently in the Courier-Mall that an activist group, led by the Greens political party, is planning to shut down the Story Bridge this weekend. Queensland Police Service is concerned about the risk public safety this planned march may cause. Can you please advise the Chamber of Council's position?
Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank Councillor Adamin for the question. As most of us would be aware, an activist group, led by the Greens political party, has threatened to shut down the Story Bridge this weekend and cause major traffic disruption. Queensland Police recently received a notice of intention for the march, which was subsequently rejected. This was on the grounds of public safety concerns and the significant disruption to residents. Yesterday, mediation between QPS and the activist group commenced, and no resolution was reached. Already, the radical organisers have not ruled out illegally marching across the Story Bridge, despite the significant safety and traffic concerns.
Name the group, say Palestine.
One moment, Councillor Parry, just turn off your mic, thank you. Councillor, I'm cautioning you, you do not call out while another councillor is on their feet speaking. You also do not direct them what they will or won't say. Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This matter will now go to the magistrate's court, and QPS are urging the protestors to respect whatever decision the court makes. Council has been involved with providing advice to QPS as to the traffic and safety concerns from our traffic and structures areas. We have two main concerns, Madam Chair. Firstly, in relation to the unauthorised entry of the footpaths work site. We are all aware that there are construction works underway at the Story Bridge. The Story Bridge footpaths are closed because council is proactively replacing them, and works are well underway. This is a live construction site, and the risk of people accessing these footpaths during the march would be catastrophic. It could result in the serious injury of those involved, further delay to these works, or an increase to the cost of this project to ratepayers. Secondly, council has significant concerns about the traffic impacts of this protest. More than 26,000 vehicles travel over the Story Bridge on a Sunday. If this protest proceeds, every single one of those will have to be diverted. They will be diverted onto roads that are not necessarily equipped to carry that level of traffic. Think about Gip Street, which will queue from Kent Place. QPS will have to manually control this intersection. We will see congestion and queuing across our road network. On the north side, this could go as far back as Lutwich Road. On the south side, it'll go past the PA Hospital. Of course, it's not just commuters travelling that will be impacted by this protest. It's also emergency vehicles, ambulances, police, fireys that will be delayed because of this protest. Madam Chair, we will have our buses operating on the surface level in the CBD this weekend as we complete the Adelaide Street tunnel works. There will not be ample space for additional diverted vehicles to move efficiently around our city. A partial closure of the Story Bridge is not possible because it would not be safe for those people protesting. This is the advice that council has provided to QPS, and it is the reason for our concern. To be clear, we support people's right to protest, but we don't support ignoring the significant traffic disruptions and safety concerns. We certainly do not support activist groups potentially breaking the law and ignoring the court's decision. It is important to note that two alternative protest paths were proposed by the QPS. Both of these were refused by the protestors. The only option attractive to the organisers is one that's unsafe, unsafe for those taking part, and that will cause mass disruption to the wider community. Of course, everybody is entitled to their own political opinions. We know that many people are concerned by what's going on in the Middle East. I'm one of them. But we cannot support radical extremists co-opting these events for their own purposes. Just recently, what we saw in Sydney was a protest that was hijacked by extremism. There are terrorist flags flown, pictures of suicide bombers, and the Iranian Ayatollah displayed. These are people who execute members of the LGB2, TIQ plus community, and women, and openly call for another Holocaust. This has no place in our society, this has no place in Brisbane, and council will continue to work with the QPS as we urge the organisers of this protest to consider alternative routes We know that they want this protest to proceed, but we ask that they ensure it does in a safe way that minimises the disruptions and the dangers to Brisbane residents.
Further questions, Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. My question is for the Lord Mayor. The Supreme Court has already found that Moreton Bay Council may have breached the Human Rights Act by failing to provide properly weight, to properly weight the right to shelter for rough sleepers. Why is your LMP administration risking the same unlawful conduct by forcing rough sleepers out of Brisbane parks?
Lord Mayor.
Madam Chair, that question shows a very clear lack of understanding about a number of fundamental issues here. First of all, two different councils, two different approaches, two different sets of local laws, two different sets of ways of responding to homelessness. And so, to try and draw parallels between the two is actually, you're on, Councillor Massey, some very shaky ground there because we do things differently. But our fundamental concern is to get people into safety, so, and allowing them to stay indefinitely in parks, which Councillor Massey and also her Labor colleagues in the Coalition of Chaos are happy, are happy to see people stay indefinitely in parks in dangerous situations. And also, having those parks then become no-go zones for the general public. They are entirely happy with that. They'd like to see it continue on forever. That is their position, and they made it very clear. They repeatedly say, leave those people alone. Well, we actually believe in getting help for people that are staying in parks in tents.
One moment, Lord Mayor. Point of order, Councillor Massey.
So the question was about the legal ramifications.
Thank you, Councillor, we've heard your question.
Legal ramifications of continuing this, not about how the Lord Mayor is...
Councillor Massey, that's not a point of order, you've asked your question, and the Lord Mayor is answering it. I caution you about speaking, calling out while I'm speaking, that's your second caution. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. And so, our concern, as I said, is to get people out of dangerous tent encampments and into safe accommodation. And so, we're working with a joint task force, with state government and a whole range of state government agencies to help that occur. Now, it's a slow process, but it's a process that we are committed to because we want to make sure people get the help that they deserve and that they need. So that's not something that can all happen overnight, but it's something that we're working through in a really measured and responsible way to make sure that people get that support. And so, it's not something that council is doing alone, it's something we're doing in partnership with those state agencies, and we've had some great results from that. We've had people that were in tents that are now in accommodation. And that's what we should want for people. We shouldn't want them to stay there indefinitely in parks and create no-go zones for the general community as well. So in terms of our approach, our approach continues in that measured way, in that way that is based on a genuine concern for people in that situation and helping them get out of that situation wherever possible. And so, we'll keep doing that, and the situation in Moreton Bay changes nothing for us because we want to get people out of tents and into accommodation.
Further questions, Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Planning Suburban Renewal and Economic Development Committee, Councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, the Shriner Council is partnering with the Chrissifouli government to deliver more homes sooner by investing in emerging communities like Rochdale. Can you please update the chamber on the latest funding we have secured as part of the Chrissifouli government's Residential Activation Fund?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I thank Councillor Huang for the question. Brisbane is one of Australia's fastest-growing major cities, and the Shriner Council is committed to ensuring that the infrastructure, services, and housing are in place to support this growth. That's why this administration has taken a raft of actions to help deliver for Brisbane, whether that's a 100% infrastructure charges reduction for community housing providers, or our suburban renewal precinct plans, or the adoption of key plans such as the Nathan-Saulsbury-Maruca Neighbourhood Plan. That's not to mention the approval of more than 11,000 dwellings in the last financial year, paving the way for more homes as we seek to alleviate housing challenges. But we are always looking for more opportunities to deliver, even more for Brisbane residents, and to this end, we have sought funding from the Queensland Government's Residential Activation Fund. This fund ultimately makes $2 billion available for local government areas to help deliver critical infrastructure such as stormwater, so that new residential housing developments can be facilitated. The funding is broken down into several rounds of funding. The first round funding was for $1 billion, and that's the amount available across the state to local governments. The funding prioritises and invests in key and essential infrastructure to fast-track new homes to market. Two, the fund expedited delivery of enabling infrastructure projects for developments that will accelerate housing supply. And three, it supports local governments and developers in bringing forward planned and approved housing projects where access to funding for planned infrastructure is delaying delivery of new homes. As part of our application for funding, we submitted five key projects for consideration across various suburbs, including Rochdale, Tenerife, and Polara. And I'm pleased to say that the Chrissifouli government will provide substantial funding for two of them located in Rochdale, and I'm sure Councillor Huang is pleased to see that funding made available. In particular, $47 million will be provided towards the extension of Gardiner Road, which we anticipate will unlock nearly 700 homes while easing congestion and improving livability in the area. Secondly, $14.7 million will be provided to the Rochdale Road and Ford Road trunk-stormwater infrastructure project, as identified in the latest LGIP and LTIP amendments that passed through council earlier this year. As a result, necessary drainage infrastructure for a key piece of greenfield land will be delivered, and we anticipate that a further 600 homes will be unlocked. All in all, Madam Chair, the Shriner Council has secured around $61.7 million from the Residential Activation Fund for two critical infrastructure projects, and as a result, we're looking at nearly 1,300 new homes being facilitated in the key suburb of Rochdale. As the conditions of this funding make clear, these projects will commence within 12 months and be completed within three years of a signed agreement with the state, efficiently delivering the infrastructure needed to support greater housing supply for our growing population. Madam Chair, we are thankful to the Queensland Government for this excellent initiative. It builds upon the work that the Shriner Council is already undertaking to boost housing supply and ultimately make Brisbane as livable and accessible as possible. And we look forward to continuing partnerships with the state government for the benefit of all Brisbane residents. Thank you.
Further questions, Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Every weekend, Winham Nepal, Winham Rugby, and Winham Manly Touch bring thousands of locals and visitors to Elinora Park, but there is just nowhere to park. Council has a reserve access road, which the clubs have identified as an ideal spot for a new car park rather than the surrounding suburban streets. The clubs have launched a petition to make this happen. If you agree with the head petitioner's concerns, when can they expect you to act?
Sorry?
One moment, Councillor Collier.
I was going to ask you again if your question, but it sounds like we might be...
Thank you, Councillor, Councillor Collier.
The clubs have launched a petition to make this happen. If you agree with the head petitioner's concerns, when can they expect you to act and get this car park built?
Councillor Johnston. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's an interesting interjection from Councillor Johnston. I remember her trying to stop local football club parking near the field, remember that? She was actually intervening in that one to try and stop them parking. But, look, this is absolutely a situation that occurs in many parts of the city with really popular sporting grounds and facilities, and it's great to see the clubs going from strength to strength in terms of participation. And so, in a growing city, we have to manage these challenges, and always happy to consider petitions and proposals from the community. I'll be working closely with Councillor Gibney, who is very closely on top of this issue and aware of it, to make sure that we can respond in the best way possible. So I would simply say, happy to consider the petition, and we'll make sure that we respond to the community as soon as we can.
Further questions, Councillor, one moment, please. Councillor Cassidy.
Well, thanks very much, Chair. I move the suspension of standing orders to enable me to move the following motion, that this council compels Councillor Alex Gibney to urgently engage with the Winham Rugby Union Club, the Winham Manly Touch Association, and the Winham and District Nepal Club to construct a safe, dedicated off-road car park on the reserve access road in 74B Grenada Street, Elinora Park.
Seconded. Has been moved by Councillor Cassidy and seconded by Councillor Collier to suspend standing orders. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by Councillor Collier and seconded by Councillor Gibney. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being five in favour, 17 against, and three abstentions.
That is lost. Further questions, Councillor Wolf.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is to the Chair of the City Planning Suburban Renewal and Economic Development Committee, Councillor Allen. Councillor Allen, the Shriner Council is investing in making Brisbane's lifestyle even better by helping our retail, hospitality, and entertainment sectors to thrive. Can you please update the chamber on visitor numbers in our Queen Street Mall and how we are creating more for them to see and do?
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to Councillor Wolf for the question. Through you, Madam Chair, Councillor Wolf certainly knows that Brisbane is Australia's lifestyle capital, and will continue to capture global attention as one of the best places in the world to visit. Recent figures released by Brisbane City Analytics show that for the month of July, almost 7.7 million people visited Queen Street Mall. A large contributor to the crowd surge during the month was the British and Irish Lions Tour, which cemented the mall's status as Australia's most successful pedestrian retail precinct. On Wednesday, the 2nd of July, the day of the warm-up match, more than 256,000 people passed through the mall. And the first test weekend from the 18th to the 20th of July brought over 741,000 visitors through the mall, and I was certainly in the mall on that weekend, and it was absolutely heaving. So I can certainly attest to the number of people who were getting in and out of that precinct. So from sporting showdowns to cultural festivals and world-class performances, Brisbane's packed events calendar is keeping the city vibrant and its economy strong. While already drawing impressive crowds, the mall is set to benefit even further from a pipeline of major developments and investment that will further boost the precinct's appeal. Pipeline projects expected to boost foot traffic in the Queen Street Mall include: one, the Griffith University converting the heritage-listed Treasury Building into a new CBD campus; two, Country Road relocating to a new flagship store in the heritage-listed former Bank of New South Wales building at the top of the Queen Street Mall; three, global fast-food restaurant Wendy's plans to open a flagship restaurant in the CBD; four, international luxury hotel chain InterContinental Brisbane will commence refurbishment programme to enhance its offering; ISP T plans to redevelop the Winter Garden into a vibrant precinct ahead of the 2032 Games; Charter Hall plan to transform the former St George's... St George Bank site at the top of the Queen Street Mall into a modern tower with streetscape activations, and ultimately, we have an earmarked revitalisation of Uptown. Future events that are expected to boost foot traffic in the Queen Street Mall include Riverfire and Brisbane Festival in September 2025, the second test of the Ashes series in December, major acts including Keith Urban, who was here last weekend, Ed Sheeran, Lady Gaga, Metallica and ACDC, and of course, in February next year, the Royal Edinburgh Military Tattoo. So, all of these events drive traffic into the Queen Street Mall and surrounding areas. Now, growth in the Queen Street Mall has also been backed by major transport upgrades, improving access for residents and visitors. Of course, Brisbane Metro already offers a 24/7 weekend service into the CBD, while Cross River Rail, once completed, will deliver the new Albert Street Station and public plaza in the future. And I think, from recollection, something like 75,000 commuters are expected to use that Albert Street Station every day. So, you can certainly see the kind of volume of visitors that are likely to be introduced into Queen Street Mall. So, Madam Chair, Queen Street Mall is a major economic engine for our city and a must-visit destination for locals and visitors alike. With more people living, working, shopping and studying in the city than ever before, the Shriner Council is in conjunction with property owners, is ensuring Queen Street Mall continues to evolve and thrive as a key part of Brisbane's exciting future. Publications such as Time Magazine, Frommers and the New York Times have all named Brisbane as one of the world's top destinations to visit. We are looking to continue this momentum, not only for 2032, but for years beyond. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further questions? Councillor Johnston.
Yes, thank you. My question is to the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, my question is about council's tree planting programme. In April 2024, residents lodged requests in both Chelma and Yarongpili to have a replacement street tree planted. This is almost one year before the March cyclone. Follow-ups by my office have revealed that these trees have still not been planted almost 18 months after the residents' initial requests. Why is it taking 18 months to get street trees planted, and do you think this is an acceptable level of service from council?
Lord Mayor.
Thank you for the question, councillor Johnston. Look, I know there's always more to the story than what comes up in a question, so I'm happy to have a look at this, and certainly...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
I table the reference numbers and the advice, which is completely true, and the Lord Mayor's implications that I'm saying something false is untrue.
The Lord Mayor is answering your question, councillor. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I was just saying that there's always more to the story, and we've seen this time and time again. Little bits of information that might have been left out, or little bits of information that councillor Johnston might not be aware of. Either way, there's always more to the story, and so I'm happy to have a look at the full story.
Further questions? Councillor Adamin.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Chair. My question is to the Chair of Customer Services Committee. Councillor Hutton, the Shriner Council is making sure that engaging with council remains convenient with a brand-new one-stop-shop for council services. Can you please update the chamber on how residents can now use the new My Services portal to report an issue, apply for a permit or pay their rates?
Councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Chair, and through you, I'd like to thank councillor Adamin for the question. And Chair, when it comes to digital services, there are few more proactive than our councillor here, councillor Adamin. Just a couple of months ago, this same councillor went into bat for his community, urging Google to fix a navigation glitch that sent hundreds of drivers down a very rural road. His advocacy made a real difference for locals, and it just shows how seriously councillor Adamin takes technology and its impact on everyday lives. So, it's fitting that he asked the question, Madam Chair, about our newest digital initiative, one that is designed to be more engaging with council, making engaging with council easier, faster and more personalised. Now, we all know Brisbane is a rapidly growing city. We have been the fastest-growing capital city in Australia, and over the last decade, we have grown in expectations from our residents. People now expect to interact with council in the same way that they do with Amazon, with Google, with Apple, on demand and whatever they need on their own terms. That's why our council has launched the My Services for Brisbane, or the My SB, a new digital platform that puts the power of council in the hands of our residents. Launched in early July, more than 6,500 residents have signed up for their own account without any formal promotion. It tells us that there is a strong appetite for a digital front door to council that is simple, secure and user-friendly. At its core, My SB is about convenience, giving residents and businesses a one-stop-shop for their interactions with us. Right now, users can use it to report potholes, footpath damage or broken tree branches using the contact information that is pre-filled. They can also apply for permits, pay their rates and manage other property requests through this account. It makes contacting council faster, easier and more accessible. And we're only just getting started. We're prioritising improvements to service requests that residents can use the most, starting with high-demand usage issues like potholes and fallen tree branches. Our goal is to make reporting even easier, using features like GPS tagging from photos and pre-filled forms that save time and reduce hassle. In the future, account holders will be able to track requests with real-time updates, access to waste vouchers and much, much more in one simple place. We've also ensured that the platform is flexible and easy to use so that every resident can engage with council in the way that suits them best. That includes offering a variety of secure and convenient sign-in options. Residents can use their standard email account, Google or Apple ID. But, what really sets Brisbane apart is the fact that we are the first local government in Australia to integrate with the federal government's My ID system. For those unfamiliar with My ID, it is the secure digital credentials used to log into the MyGov and ATO, Centrelink and Medicare apps, and it can now be used to access our council platforms. This is a major step forward for digital government at a local level. It gives residents confidence that their personal information is protected, while also making it easier to log in using credentials they already trust. It's another way that we're making council service faster, easier and more accessible for residents. And behind the scenes, My SB is already improving our ability to serve the community. Many users are taking the opportunity to update outdated contact details like phone numbers and addresses. It helps us build a more accurate record of each resident and provides a more targeted and timely service. And this is just the beginning, Madam Chair. My Services Brisbane will continue to evolve, will add new features, respond to community feedback and use what we learn to shape the development of the broader Brisbane app. It will bring even more functionality into a one seamless digital experience, delivering services faster, easier and more accessible. And we are very proud to be leading the way when it comes to digital innovation in local government, making Brisbane's lifestyle even better.
Further questions? Councillor Kim.
My question is for the Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, organisations on the frontline of supporting the homeless reported that during National Homelessness Week, you ordered council officers to seize and destroy tents and valuables of the most vulnerable in the community at no notice. Surely you would know long-term accommodation is not available for the homeless, so can you explain how throwing out tents is solving Brisbane's homelessness crisis, which has exploded under your watch?
Lord Mayor.
That's a completely false claim, an absolutely false claim. And so, I don't know which organisations councillor Kim is referring to, but certainly that has not been happening. And as I explained before, we're continuing on in a very methodical way to get people the support that they need, and it is a slow process. And I know some people in the community would like it to be a faster process, but we have to work through and make sure that people are matched with the support and services that they need and that they deserve. And so, we're continuing to do that. But, you know, these kind of claims by politically motivated people like councillor Kim are just not helpful and they're not true.
Further questions? Councillor Gibney.
Thank you. My question is for the Chair of the Community in the Arts, councillor Howard. Councillor Howard, last week we heard how the Shriner Council is making Brisbane's lifestyle even better with our vibrant artistic communities. Can you please update the chamber on what Brisbane's vibrant writers' community can expect from this year's Brisbane Writers' Festival?
Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, and through you, I thank councillor Gibney for the question and for her passionate and ongoing advocacy for Brisbane's creative community. It's always a pleasure to speak about the ways that our city is supporting local artists, and today I'm especially delighted to talk about one of our most beloved cultural events, the Brisbane Writers' Festival. Last Thursday, I had the privilege of attending the official launch of the 2025 programme. It was a celebration of creativity, community and the written word, a moment that reminded us why Brisbane is Australia's lifestyle capital. From the vibrant precincts of South Bank to the leafy surrounds of our suburban parks, Brisbane is a city that inspires stories, and the Brisbane Writers' Festival is where those stories come to life. This year's programme is bold, diverse and deeply Brisbane. Held for the first time at the iconic Brisbane powerhouse, the 2025 festival marks an exciting new chapter. Over four days, from the 9th to the 12th of October, the festival will host more than 100 live events, featuring author talks, conversations, panel discussions and special sessions. It's a blockbuster line-up of literary A-listers with 200 artists participating, half of them proudly Queensland-based. Whether you're drawn to compelling crime, powerful true stories, romance, book club favourites, stories from Hollywood or history, this year's programme has something for everyone. It's a festival that reflects Brisbane's growing reputation as a cultural destination, one that's not just preparing for the 2032 Olympic and Paralympic Games, but also investing in the arts, ideas and imagination that make Brisbane truly world-class. Among the headline guests are some of Australia's most beloved and respected writers. Helen Garner, whose work has shaped generations of readers, will be appearing alongside Trent Dalton, whose Brisbane-based novels have captured hearts across the country. Anita Heiss will bring her powerful voice and First Nations storytelling to the stage. An international guest, Griffin Dunn, actor, director and memorist, will share stories from Hollywood and beyond. A special highlight of the launch was the unveiling of this year's festival artwork, created by Brisbane's own Phoebe Paradise. Known initially for her bold and expressive street art, Phoebe has evolved into one of Brisbane's most exciting multidisciplinary creatives. Her journey from laneway murals to leading-edge illustration, fashion and gallery work is a testament to Brisbane's thriving creative scene. Today, she's not only an artist but a founder, having established Merivale Studios, a dynamic creative space that champions local talent and fosters artistic collaboration. Her artwork for this year's festival is a vibrant reflection of Brisbane's creative pulse, raw, real and unmistakably local. Chair, our council is proud to support events like the Brisbane Writers' Festival because they help create more to see and do in our suburbs. They bring people together, they spark conversations, they showcase our diversity and they make our lifestyle even better. We know that keeping Brisbane moving isn't just about roads and rapid transport, it's also about making space for ideas. That's why we continue to invest in festivals and events that enrich our community. From the suburban and multicultural festivals programme to our support for local libraries and creative hubs, we're backing Brisbane's storytellers. This year's festival features more than just panels and readings, it's a platform for emerging voices, a stage for established authors and a gathering place for readers of all ages. It's about celebrating the power of words to connect us, challenge us and change us, and it's happening right here in Brisbane. Chair, as we look ahead to the future of our city, we must continue to strike the right balance between growth and creativity, between infrastructure and inspiration. The Brisbane Writers' Festival is part of that balance, it's part of our commitment to building a city that's not just bigger but better. So, to the team behind the festival, thank you. To the volunteers, the authors, the artists and the readers, thank you. And to Phoebe Paradise, thank you for giving us a visual story that captures the spirit of Brisbane in 2025. Finally, I encourage everyone to jump online at bwf.org.au and explore the full programme. With more than 100 events planned and a line-up that spans genres, generations and geographies, there is something for every reader, every thinker and every curious mind. Let's keep Brisbane moving, let's keep Brisbane reading.
Thank you. That now ends question time, councillors. Lord Mayor, Establishment and Coordination Committee report of the 11th of August 2025.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting held on Monday, the 11th of August 2025, be adopted.
Seconded. Has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by the Deputy Mayor that the report of the Establishment and Coordination Committee meeting dated Monday, the 11th of August 2025, be adopted. Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As I always do, just wanted to briefly mention some of the light-ups that we've been doing recently on council's iconic assets across the city. Last night, City Hall was lit up in green and gold to celebrate the latest additions to the Australian family, our new citizens, where we welcomed over 500 new citizens last night in City Hall. The remaining assets, the Story Bridge, Victoria Bridge, Kangaroo Point Bridge and Radcliffe Place were lit up in yellow to support Queensland Road Safety Week, which will also continue tonight. Tomorrow and Thursday, our assets will be lit up in yellow again, but this time it's to support Daffodil Day, raising funds and awareness to support cancer research. On Friday, the assets will be lit up in purple and yellow to support Brain Injury Awareness Week, celebrating the achievements of those living with brain injuries and committed to giving them and their family, and the commitment given to them by their families and communities. On Saturday, our assets will be lit up in blue and yellow to support Ukrainian Independence Day and to show our support and solidarity with the people of Ukraine as they fight against the invasion that occurred a number of years ago, and they continue to fight. I stand with them. We support a free and democratic Ukraine. On Sunday, our assets will be lit up in red, blue and green to mark seven years until the beginning of the Brisbane Paralympic Games. And so, we recently marked the milestone of seven years to go until the opening ceremony of the Olympics, and the Paralympic Games will open on the 24th of August 2032. And so, we're celebrating that milestone just as vigorously and looking forward to continuing to work with Paralympics Australia as we plan not only for the Olympics but the Paralympics as well. I announced earlier today that work is now in full swing when it comes to the replacement of the decking on the Story Bridge, and so the workers have been busy installing steel beams to lay the new deck on. And so, they're in the process of installing 1.5 kilometres of steel beams along both sides of the footpaths, and that will then allow the new decking to be installed on those new beams. And so, we're doing the work. The decking has also started being delivered to the bridge. I mentioned previously that one of the factors that was causing the time issue here was the manufacturing of the deck, and so we've started receiving the sections of new deck. And if you have a look at the Story Bridge right now, you will see pallets of decking have already been delivered to the bridge. They're up on the footpaths, ready to be installed over the coming weeks, and that process will be ongoing. As we receive more sections of deck, they will be installed. The decking, which I had the opportunity to inspect today, is a composite material, which is a glass-fibre material, incredibly strong. I jumped on it, I couldn't get it to buckle. Councillor Wines jumped on it and couldn't get it to buckle. And if that wasn't enough, councillor Wines then got someone else to jump on it, and we still couldn't get it to buckle. And so, it is very strong. And so, at the moment, we've got load ratings on the old footpaths of 70 kilograms per square metre, which is one of the reasons why the footpaths are closed. This new decking will give a loading of 500 kilograms per square metre, so you can think about the increase in strength and weight-carrying capacity... about the increase in strength and weight-carrying capacity there. So, that decking, which we've engaged not only our Story Bridge team, so our Story Bridge team, which is a full-time team, are working, also with some contractors. The steel is BlueScope steel, and it's come out of Eagle Farm. The joists are being manufactured by Langford Metals, and the decking is being supplied by GRP Australia. So, a number of local companies we've engaged to help us with this installation. And so, as we've previously announced, we're on track to open one side of the decking by the end of this year, and that'll be, sorry, one side of the footpath by the end of this year, and that'll be the western side, which is the city side, and then shortly afterwards, we'll be opening the eastern side, which is the new farm side as well. So, we're going as quickly as we can, with the key time constraint now being the delivery of the deck panels. And so, I want to thank our team, I want to thank councillor Anita Parry, and also councillor Ryan Murphy and councillor Andrew Wines before them for their work in making sure this can happen as soon as possible. Once again, I do want to apologize for the inconvenience of having the footpaths closed, and I understand that is an inconvenience, and that's why we're working as quickly as we can to get it reopened again. But, having inspected the work today, I know that that work is happening in earnest and as quickly as possible. I did also want to just call out that we've had another major milestone with the Kangaroo Point Pedestrian Bridge, and we've now surpassed 4.7 million trips across the bridge, and this is a bridge that only opened in December.
One moment, please, Lord Mayor. Councillor Massey, I caution you again. And councillor Cassidy for calling out while the Lord Mayor is on his feet. Lord Mayor.
We heard the conspiracy theories being claimed. The reality is that since December last year, in, you know, we're talking less than 12 months, 4.7 million trips have been taken across the new Kangaroo Point Bridge. And that's a fantastic outcome, and as we've previously said, that exceeded all of our expectations. And by the way, it exceeded our expectations well before the Story Bridge footpaths were closed for repair. And so, the tinfoil hat-wearers over there can peddle conspiracy theories all they like, but I also say that the Kangaroo Point Bridge carries far more pedestrian cyclists and scooter users each day than the Story Bridge ever did, ever did, by more than double. And so, bringing out the conspiracy theories, it's just a load of rubbish, but one person who absolutely loves the Kangaroo Point Bridge is federal, well, this one's a good one, Federal Labor Infrastructure Minister Catherine King.
That's right. Yes, she does.
Who, every time she's in Brisbane, which happened to be yesterday and today, loves to go across the bridge because she helped us deliver it.
That's right.
And we thank her for the more than $60 million that the federal government put towards this bridge, but minister King posted last night on social media a lovely photo of the bridge, a night-time photo, and she posted, and I quote, "An evening walk in Brisbane on the beautiful Kangaroo Point Bridge. It's full of people walking, riding bikes, and enjoying the mild Queensland winter." I don't think it was that mild last night, but Catherine is from Ballarat, so maybe it's all relative. It's all relative. And she said, "We opened the bridge late last year. It was delayed, but that was because the resources were diverted to prioritise Brisbane's recovery from the 2022 floods. The pedestrian counter at the end of the bridge said more than 6,000 people had crossed it just today between Brisbane's eastern suburbs and the CBD. An excellent city-shaping investment and a bridge people will keep falling in love with for years to come." I couldn't have said it better myself, and it was great to see minister King today for some important meetings that we were having, but every time I see her, I do thank her for her contribution to the bridge, and I appreciate her passion for the bridge as well, which is obvious. And so, to have 4.7 million trips, not a coincidence, not a conspiracy, it's because it was well-planned, well-delivered, and people love using it, and those numbers will only continue to grow. And so, we will see that being an absolutely critical asset. And I say again, the Kangaroo Point Bridge, before the Story Bridge footpaths closed down, was well above expectation and was carrying far more people than the Story Bridge ever carried when it comes to pedestrians, cyclists, and scooter users, and so that says a lot. The Story Bridge has been there for over 85 years. This new bridge has been there for less than 12 months and is already carrying about double the number of pedestrians and cyclists a day, and so that says a lot, and a great outcome. Item A, Madam Chair, is the amendment to the Brisbane powerhouse lease arrangement, and this one is important because it's all about making sure that the powerhouse, the powerhouse has capital available to reinvest in the facilities. And so, this is about giving a rent reduction to the powerhouse so they can use the money they would otherwise spend on rent.
Move for an extension, Madam Chair. Seconded.
It's been moved by the Deputy Mayor for an extension and seconded by councillor Dixon. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Thank you. As I was saying, this is about giving a rent reduction to the powerhouse so that they can invest that money they would otherwise spend on rent into facilities and into improving their facilities. And so, in the first year, there's a 60% reduction in rent, and that gradually steps down over the years as part of the agreement. And so, this is something that's been mutually agreed with the powerhouse, something that they're very supportive of because it allows them to continue to improve their facilities. And so, obviously, they're an absolutely critical part of Brisbane's arts and cultural scene, it's something that we're proud to be involved with. We're also very grateful for the outgoing artistic director, Kate Gould, and the incoming artistic director, Louise Bazzina, who is doing her final Brisbane Festival next month, and then will come on board to oversee the powerhouse and take it forward to the next exciting chapter. And so, this is all about making sure money can go into improvements for a strategic renewal and growth, and to give them the flexibility. I was interested, though, to hear that the Labor Party apparently told the media that we had increased the rent for the powerhouse. I mean, can you read basic documents, Madam Chair? There's a difference between a rent increase and a rent reduction, and it's the opposite. And what we're doing here is reducing the rent for the powerhouse. It's a rent abatement for the powerhouse, not a rent increase. So, it beggars belief that we've got the Labor Party once again misspeaking. It's kind of like when you get asked about whether the organised protest in the gallery, whether the protesters were organised by you as the leader of the opposition, and then you say no, and then you say yes, and you say, "What difference does it make?" It's like when you say, "Oh, council's increasing the rent for the powerhouse, no, they're reducing it, what difference does it make?" Councillor Cassidy has a history of misspeaking, and it's incredible that basic facts, or the basic difference between a rent decrease and a rent increase, seem to escape his attention. So, I commend this item to the chamber. Item B is the significant contracting plan for the supply and delivery of sand. Very local government, it's a basic thing, but what this does do, though, is it shows in a very real singular way the kind of cost pressures on council when a basic thing like sand goes up by 36%.
Yes.
And so, we've been saying this for years, concrete is up, steel is up, a whole range of commodities that we use are up, and even sand is up in price. And so, the last time we had an arrangement was in 2019, and that was due to run for six or seven years and is now due to expire. We've gone out again, and surprise, surprise, the cost of a basic thing is up. And as we've also been saying, the cost of all of the things that we're buying to provide the services and to build the projects that we deliver are up significantly and far more than we've increased rates. We've kept rates as low as possible, and so our costs are increasing. Our rates certainly aren't increasing at that level. We have the lowest rates in southeast Queensland, we've made a commitment to keep it that way, and that's why you will see us making sure that we can continue to provide great services for people, but also relieve the pressure on people by making sure rates don't increase at the same level as all of our costs are increasing. How have we done that? We made some sensible savings over the last year or two, and that has allowed us to relieve the pressure on ratepayers. Other councils didn't do that in the same way that we did, and they're, you know, delivering rate increases of over 7%, over 6% in a number of cases, whereas we took the responsible action and made sensible savings to help relieve the pressure, and it has allowed us to deliver a more affordable rates outcome. But this particular submission highlights just how much basic things have increased. Now, I'm sure we'll find a way, or Labor will find a way, to try and blame the LNP for the increase in the price of sand. Apparently, this is an LNP increase, but the reality is, it's called the market, it's called supply and demand. It's called, concrete is up, steel is up, a whole range of other commodities are up, and so is sand. And so, we're obviously providing for this procurement arrangement going forward to make sure that we can deliver the things that we need to deliver, and this submission will allow us to do that.
Further speakers, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on both of these items here today. And the Lord Mayor speaks with a forked tongue when he talks about council delivering services to the people of Brisbane. And these two items are a great case in point for us to be able to demonstrate to Brisbane what's so fundamentally wrong with the way this LNP operates Brisbane City Council these days. There's a lot of LNP spin in the Lord Mayor's speech today, but there are some startling facts that he has omitted from that. So, let's go through that, Chair. Clause A, the amendment of the lease to the Brisbane powerhouse. It's in black and white before us today that the base rent, including the discount that the Lord Mayor talked about, for the first year of this contract, amended contract, it's not a new contract, he's gone in and amended the contract just for the purposes of rent, the base rent, including a 60% discount, is $125,000 a year more than it was in 2020. But according to the Lord Mayor, if you listen to him and you believed him at your peril, he would say that's a decrease in rent. So even with, on his new calculations that he's included, with a 60% decrease in the first year, which goes down each and every year, 60% in the first year, which sees a $125,000 increase to their rent, drops to 55%, then to 30%, then to 18% rapidly. And I wonder what happens then, Chair? Let me just sort of think out loud here for a moment, when that discount falls off a cliff, and we're not seeing a discount on the huge increase in rent that the Lord Mayor is placing on the powerhouse, I think the rent might be going up each and every year of this contract. So you really can't believe a thing this Lord Mayor says when it comes to basic council contracts with operations like at the Brisbane powerhouse. The lease is more than just the building, of course, it's the powerhouse park, and if we're to believe the LNP and were to believe the Lord Mayor, it's about giving the powerhouse more capital, probably just in the first year or two, but it's not really, is it? When you see the base level of that rent increase so dramatically, that's just code for council spending less directly. It's code for cost shifting, so the rent is increasing, they're putting a false reduction, a false reduction just for the purposes of LNP spin here today, and saying to the powerhouse, "You are increasingly gonna be on your own because the LNP are walking away from the arts and from creative industries in Brisbane step by step by step." So the LNP are treating this community facility like a private site, just another shameless cash grab. So, again, the figure that is before us today, almost $700,000 in rent a year, is up $125,000 from the previous contract, and that includes in the first year a 60% discount on that rent, which is going to reduce each and every year of that contract. So I think we need to have a bit of a long view of what the powerhouse is about and why it's there, and the commitment from Brisbane City Council to the powerhouse over its 20-plus year, 25-year history here in Brisbane. This year, it's turning 25, of course, and it's hard to imagine that without a concerted effort from a Labor administration through the late 90s and early 2000s, that the powerhouse otherwise would have been bulldozed. In the mid 90s, there was a debate that raged about whether the powerhouse should be demolished or whether it should be refurbished, and the only reason it wasn't demolished at the time was that the million-dollar price tag for demolition seemed too high at the time. So thankfully, it was spared for those next few years. In 1996, the federal government considered housing the planned National Indigenous Performing Arts Centre there, which the then-local councillor for Central Wood, David Hinchcliffe, said would bring a bucket-load of money to the powerhouse, just as council and the state had agreed to invest in that. A federal election was called that same day, of course, and a year went by and the Howard Government changed their mind about that, which forced council to go back to the drawing board, of course, and it seems the work that council then did, a Labor council then did, paid off with the powerhouse now sitting very proud as one of Brisbane's most iconic cultural assets. In its first year, brought in $100,000 in ticket sales in its first year. By 2010, its 10th year, was bringing in $3 million annually in ticket sales. So people appreciate and love the Brisbane powerhouse. A $3.5 million refurbishment in 2007 brought increased audience capacities, restaurant and bar facilities, as well as functions and conference spaces. So there is a history, a long history of advocacy for the arts community from Labor councils, from investing in the powerhouse, getting it up out of the ground as a venue, and then allocating council resources to supporting its operations. Of course, in the early days, it attracted some criticism that it was ugly, the graffiti should have been cleaned up, and the exhibits were a bit too out there at the time, not something we would think these days about the Brisbane powerhouse. And the difference between that approach that we look at in the long history of the powerhouse, about supporting the arts in Brisbane, creating these cultural spaces, the things that Labor builds, and Labor built the powerhouse, we see the LNP neglect those assets, and we see the LNP try and turn them into a cash cow, into private operations essentially. And we see that with so much that Labor built and the legacy that Labor administrations left, that the LNP are tearing that apart, and we're now at the 21st year of this regime, and we're getting to the very end of all the things that they can destroy about the things that people love here in Brisbane. So, this is a case of paying more, for the powerhouse, paying more in rent, for the people of Brisbane, paying more in rates and fees and charges, and getting less and less back. That rent increase of $125,000 in the first year, that's interestingly funded the overseas trips of the Lord Mayor and councillor Adams and councillor Howard, the chair of the committee that's supposed to be looking after this amazing asset. That rent increase this year evidently pays for all of their first-class travel overseas over the last couple of years. So if we can sort of think about reckless financial vandalism of this LNP council, think about these kinds of facilities and places, and you listen to the gormless spin of the Lord Mayor and saying, "Everything's great about this and everybody loves this despite the fact that this hasn't been aired publicly until it comes to a council meeting", and then they intend to just shut it down, vote it in, and not talk about it again, and don't like questions being asked about these deals. But that's our job, that's our job. And the Lord Mayor doesn't like it, he doesn't like criticism, but I have read the documents, Lord Mayor. I've had a look at that formula that you put in there, and it is clear, it is in black and white, there is a massive increase in rent in the first year, even including the discount you talked about, and that discount is going to evaporate over the next five years, meaning the powerhouse is going to be paying more and more and more to council in rent. to council in rent. This sounds familiar, doesn't it? So this is a council-owned facility, right? Yeah, that's right. Council-owned facility. So council is getting an operator in there to, to operate the powerhouse and to pay council rent for its facility there. A bit like those arrangements. And, and, and in the past, would have invested some of that in capital upgrades at the powerhouse. But what we've heard from the Lord Mayor today is that he's intending on walking away from that. He's now saying to the powerhouse, you've got to go out on your own. There's going to be less and less support from Brisbane City Council for the arts in Brisbane. You are on your own. That's what the Lord Mayor is saying to the powerhouse and to creatives right across Brisbane. He is fundamentally walking away from the levels of support we have seen in the past under previous administrations. And it's not his priority, doesn't, he doesn't prioritize that. They didn't talk about the powerhouse at his special leadership conference at Harvard recently, I've heard. That, that wasn't on the agenda, support for the powerhouse. Therefore, he's not interested in it because that's, that's the tune that he marches to these days, the Harvard Business School, apparently. Well, it's a, it's a massive shame for the people of Brisbane that we now see after 21 years of this LNP regime, that they've been picking away at the cultural fabric of Brisbane over that long period of time. And now we have this situation where this newspeak of the Lord Mayor saying everything's fine, don't read what's in the documents, just believe what he says and somehow everything will be okay. But it's not okay. Moving on to clause B, the significant contracting plan for the supply and delivery of sand. An important one, as the Lord Mayor said. It's an important thing for council to get right. But unfortunately, we're seeing here in this item that council is not getting it right. And we're going to be left drastically sure.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Point of order, councillor Collier.
I move for an extension.
Seconded. It's been moved for an extension by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor King. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it, councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. So four, well, five categories technically. There's one A and V, which is for asphalt production at Eagle Farm and Riverview. Category two sand for concrete blend at Brokalbra. Category three bulk sand for sandbagging, a critical one for a city that is afflicted by climate disasters every second year. And category four, a new category, alternative and value-added products. Example, recycled crushed glass and innovative additives. So what we see here is the supply and delivery of sand is 1.6 billion, million rather, wouldn't be that much. 1.6 million based on the spend from the last four years. So let's just reflect on that for a moment. The Lord Mayor just explained to us 10 minutes ago that the cost of sand for sandbagging and for making asphalt to resurface our roads and for making concrete to build drains and repair footpaths has gone up, I think he said, over 30%, 38%. And yet, in the contract we have before us today, Chair, the spend that is proposed is consistent with the spend that we saw over the last four years. So we're seeing no growth in funding to deliver the kind of infrastructure we need as a growing city, as a city that is more affected by climate disasters. So the Lord Mayor said everything's going up in price. He said sand, concrete, steel, all going up. And what is his response to that? To cut. To cut the, in real terms, the amount of funding allocated to the purchase of these raw materials. Now, I'd just like to quote something. This is internal council position on stagnant funding for services. And I quote, "Funding models are required which support per capita allocations, indexed to support population increases and cost escalation impacts for improved financial sustainability, maintaining the real value of funding and reducing likelihood of reduced service due to erosion of funding." Goes on to say, "Council does not support funding models which would result in reduced funding for council, nor an ongoing static funding position." So I repeat, "Council does not support an ongoing static funding position, which does not account for population changes, upward cost impacts, and also does not account for initiatives which have driven increased demand, but without proportionate increased support." So when it's behind closed doors, council concedes that stagnant funding amounts to a real cut in services, given the escalating cost to deliver. But out in public, in what we've had here today, the LNP says there's nothing to see here. Lord Mayor mentioned his rarer and rarer line these days about sensible savings. But, so what the Lord Mayor has admitted today is that the cost of accessing sand in this contract to deliver the same amount of things that we did over the last four years has escalated by 38%, which means there's going to be at a minimum a 38% cut in the amount of asphalt we will be producing, the amount of concrete we'll be producing for drainage works and footpaths and, and, and safe travel crossing points on roads and things like that. And almost 40% reduction in the amount of sand we use for sandbagging during floods and cyclones. So we would, we should expect to see more sand purchased, meaning more asphalt, more road resurfacing done, more concrete and more sandbagging. But as the Lord Mayor has admitted in this item, there is no growth funding. There is no growth funding. So that'll mean less basic suppliers will be purchased by council over the next few years. And only a fraction, a fraction, small fraction of this is going to be used for sandbagging as it is. You, you would think that the LNP would get their stocks up so we don't see a repeat of the shamble that we saw during ex-tropical Cyclone Alfred. At the end of 2022, after the, after the March 2022 flood disaster, there were 150,000 sandbags available for that summer period to start with. Yet after the first day of sandbag collection sites opening for Cyclone Alfred, council ran out after just 74,000 sandbags were given away. People drove to these sites and waited in kilometre-long lines to be turned away because there was no, not enough to go around. We knew that this LNP regime cut $200 million in infrastructure funding outside of this. That was just in, not, not even in terms of affecting this contract, but in capital funding for the year ahead. And we've also previously seen pre-made concrete. So not even the concrete this sand would, would be used to make. On top of the cuts here we're seeing in this, we saw a 20% cut in the pre-made concrete contract for drainage projects as well. So things are looking pretty bad for the people of Brisbane when they start to consider what their rates are no longer paying for, no longer paying for. We saw last week 10,000 properties added to flood map overlays. And then the LNP sort of make these hollow and empty threats to, to insurance companies to, don't you dare raise premiums. And that was the end of it. And apparently that was gonna, that was gonna sort everybody's problems out. But I'm sure that those insurance companies would look at what council's doing and in terms of flood mitigation and think to themselves, hmm, if you cut $200 million from the infrastructure budget and then 20% from the pre-made concrete budget and then 38% from the sand budget that is going into making concrete in-house, maybe something's going fundamentally wrong in Brisbane City Council with the LNP in charge. There's an alternative to just all of these cuts and the LNP trying to pretend everything is okay, of course, being more proactive and transparent about those risks and about a plan going forward into mitigating them. It, it should be investing more in the basics out in the suburbs of Brisbane and reprioritizing council. It shouldn't be, it shouldn't be about the Lord Mayor claiming that spending millions and millions of dollars a year on advertising is a higher priority. It's what he said today, not one single cent has been wasted on advertising and self-indulgent advertising and sending letters out, personally signed letters. These were from the Lord Mayor himself, from, signed Adrian Shrinna down the bottom, saying, "Welcome to your newly purchased home", to somebody that has lived there for 20 years. And some people getting their notices about green bins twice in one week. And yet pensioners are being slugged for receiving a paper rates bill. Letterboxes absolutely stuffed with, with, with advertising. And the, the money that we're seeing spent on this contract, Chair, to purchase less sand than we ever have before is the same amount of money that the Lord Mayor spends on advertising. What, what kind of other comparison do you need? What are LNP councillors saying? I guess we can listen, the big, a lot of them will jump up and make contributions here. They'll talk about their experiences during the cyclone. And I, I know.
Point of order, Madam Chair. Point of order, councillor Adams.
Can I ask the relevance of this to the sand contract?
Councillors, thank you, thank you. Councillor Cassidy, if you can talk on the report.
Thanks very much, Chair. The report explicitly talks about sand for sandbagging. So I'm sure LNP councillors, councillor, councillor Dixon and Parry will, will be able to talk about the experience of the sandbagging operations at Boondle. They were there. And, and they saw the desperate need for a council that was better prepared. So they'll talk about that. There'll be councillors who'll be able to talk about their experiences in drainage projects not being able to be delivered because there's not enough concrete and funding to deliver them. I know Chair in Bald Hills, in your area, there's desperate need for that. Out in Doughboy Ward, in Tingalpa, desperate need for that. Over in the Walter Taylor. So there was lots of LNP councillors would get up. So I do look forward to their contribution in calling out the Lord Mayor's, I can't say that word, can I? The Lord Mayor's mistruth when it comes to what's included in this contract today. Because that is their job, that's their job, for them to get up and advocate for their communities and to scrutinize the decisions of, of ANC and of the Lord Mayor and the top echelons of his regime here in council. That's their job to do it. But it would strike me as absolutely incredible if there's LNP councillors who just nod along to these things and say, "That's fine, Lord Mayor. If you cut 40% of the sand and concrete and asphalt that we need for a growing city, that's fine. Just wave it through. It's all good. The LNP is going to wave through these cuts." And, and the Lord Mayor says you have to say they're called sensible savings because he thinks people are stupider than they are, Chair. That's the situation we have here. But two great examples before us today, where the LNP say everything's good and try and befuddle people about what's actually included in here. But the details are there in black and white for everybody to see. After 21 years of LNP being in power here in, in Brisbane City Council, people are fundamentally paying more and getting less than they ever have before.
Further questions, councillor Wolf.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak in support of item A, the rental abatement for the Brisbane Powerhouse. And talking about reading of documents, I'm unsure if councillor Cassidy is reading the same documents that we are. But we're actually talking about a rental abatement, which allows the powerhouse to actually invest in the facilities, invest in the arts and invest in Brisbane. The powerhouse is, is one of Brisbane's most iconic cultural institutions. It has grown into a place where creativity, community and connection come together. Every year, it hosts an extraordinary program of performances from theatre, comedy, live music to festivals, exhibitions and creative workshops. Whether it's the Brisbane Comedy Festival, the Melt Festival, Night Feast or our valued, valued local productions, the powerhouse has come to become the stage for both international artists and emerging local artists. And it's more than just a performance for this venue. It's a lifestyle destination for people of Brisbane. Families, students and visitors gather to enjoy the arts, share a meal by the river or simply take the vibrancy of New Farm Park and the surrounding precinct. It's a place that reflects the character of our city, creative, welcoming and full of life. Now, the powerhouse is all about people. It's about bringing us together in a world that can sometimes feel divided. It's spaces like the powerhouse that play an essential role in uniting our community. Whether we're laughing together at a comedy show, reflecting on powerful messages that are in exhibitions or joining a festival that celebrates our diversity, the powerhouse reminds of, reminds us of our shared humanity and the joy of coming together. What makes this moment particularly exciting is the recent announcement of the powerhouse herself, Louise Bezina, joining the powerhouse. Louise has a remarkable reputation for shaping dynamic cultural programs and leading Brisbane's festival with vision and energy. Her appointment signals a new era of creativity and opportunity for the powerhouse. And I have no doubt that her leadership will further strengthen its role as a cornerstone of Brisbane's cultural life. By providing this rental abatement, council is ensuring that Brisbane residents now and into the future continue to have access to one of our most important cultural and community assets. This decision is not just about bricks and mortar. It's about investing in creativity, connection and the cultural life of our city. I really look forward to seeing the Brisbane Powerhouse continue to inspire, entertain and bring people together for many years to come. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Chong Wah.
Thank you, Chair. I rise, I rise to speak on clause B, on a massive council contract for sourcing and supply of sand. The only environmental risk consideration in this procurement document is that successful tenders have an appropriate environmental license. This is insufficient. Where is the council's tender sustainability criteria? Where is the acknowledgement that sand dredging and mining, driven by global demand for construction, has severe impacts on both land and water ecosystems? Sustainability does not even have its own weighting in the evaluation criteria for this contracting plan. Once, one reference to environmental systems is buried in one selection criteria group with insufficient weighting to have any real impact on selection of suppliers. Extraction destroys habitats, causes biodiversity loss and accelerates coastal and riverside erosion. Erosion undermines flood protection. All this makes the impacts of climate change even worse. We know that climate change is already disseminating our, our coastline. Published studies on climate change predict Australia will lose more beaches than any other country in the world. About 40% of our sandy beaches, over 12,000 kilometres of sandy coastline this century. We can't keep taking sand from already fragile beaches and river mouths to build more roads in our cities. We all know that the LNP claim that Brisbane is a world leader in sustainability is fake news, peddled for political gain. The LNP administration is still managing this city as though there is no urgent climate change crisis, no ecosystem collapse. We must stop stripping our earth of its natural resources. Our ecosystems are fragile and collapsing. Our imbalanced earth is demanding change. It is vital that we move into reduce, reuse and recycle paradigm. Firstly, we must start with using less asphalt and concrete. Laying more and more concrete over our city is not an indicator of a successful city. In an age of climate change, more concrete means more heat, more flooding, less resilience and less livable city. We can stop widening our roads. We can have more street skates with trees and plants, more grass, garden verges, more parks, less concrete. Secondly, there are now many more options than this council's minimal use of recycled material. With a lack of transparent data, it looks like a maximum 20%. There are many ways to use higher qualities of recycled material, including subbase asphalt for roads and previously used and recycled concrete and asphalt. Large established Australian companies are already providing much higher recycled content for road servicing material, including recycled plastics, waste toner, old ties and recycled glass. Manningham and Brig Bank, councils in Victoria, have built new bike and pedestrian pathways using 100% recycled glass and rock. Five years ago, Adelaide opened the first Australian road made entirely from 100% recycled materials. A major North Shore-Hamilton Road upgrade in Brisbane used 96% recycled concrete for the road base. But that was a state government project, not council. Yes, we still need some sand for essential supplies for things like emergency sandbags. But we can recycle more and ensure there are comprehensive sustainability conditions attached to sourcing. And before someone from the LNP administration stands up and claims all sorts of fanciful sustainability leadership, the clear facts are in the council's carbon emissions public disclosure statements, these were released in order to buy carbon offsets and claim its fake carbon neutral status. and claim its fake carbon neutral status rather than actual cut emissions. In these public disclosure reports, the carbon emissions from input materials for asphalt production actually went up every year from 2019 to 2023, the last four years of reporting. Carbon emissions from construction materials also rose every year in the same period. If this administration was really committed to replacing sand and other mined inputs with recycled materials, those emissions would be going down, not up. These public disclosures reports also reveal the council's total carbon emissions increased over the seven years, from its first report in 2016 to its last in 2023. Total emissions climbed every year in the last three years of reporting. It's not a surprise that the LNP stopped releasing this data. I cannot support a contract that pays lip service to sustainability.
Councillor Chong Wah, your time has expired. Are there further speakers? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's right. And as William Blake said, heaven is in a grain of sand. And he was probably talking about the beach, but we're not. We're talking about asphalt. Because sand is a key input that enables council to make it. And this is done at two plants, at Eagle Farm and Riverview. Of course, this asphalt is then used to deliver the roads that residents rely on. It's important that Brisbane City Council procures high quality sand at good value for money for ratepayers. That's what the significant contracting plan we're discussing is about before us today. It will see us refresh the panel arrangement for council sand supply. We expect a number of different suppliers to show interest, helping us to ensure a competitive, market-based procurement process. Suppliers will need to be able to deliver 20,000 tonnes of sand per annum and be able to increase that supply during natural disasters. And that's important to remember, particularly following councillor Cassidy's speech. This contract will enable us to increase the supply of sand during natural disasters. And councillor Cassidy, I do remember seeing you at Boondle with councillor Dixon as we were shoveling sandbags. I remember you chipped me about the...
Through the chair, councillor...
Through you, Madam Chair. I remember you chipped me about the shirt that I was wearing, which was nice during a natural disaster. But what I did also see was, for the first time ever, a self-serve option for people who had the ability and the capacity to fill their own sandbags. And that was quite an innovative way to enable people, individuals, to be able to respond to the natural disaster. And what I also saw was a lot of people, particularly wearing red shirts and green shirts, using it as an opportunity to raise their profiles and, as I suppose, a political platform. So I guess it wasn't such a bad thing for everybody that was there, except for the person that got chipped about the shirt they were wearing. Flexibility, of course, is critical during flood events or other emergencies. And council's ability to ramp up road repairs quickly depends on having access to sufficient raw materials, including sand. A reliable supply chain ensures we can respond rapidly and effective when our infrastructure is under pressure. Ultimately, it's this process that helps us deliver the essential road resurfacing and expansions that keep Brisbane moving. Importantly, council expects to spend just under $15 million in the coming seven years on sand procurement. This is indeed a large increase on the previous panel term, where council spent just under $11 million. In fact, it's a 36% increase, which is pretty close to the number that the Lord Mayor quoted before. That increase reflects both the growing infrastructure needs of our city and the importance of securing resilient supply chains in a changing environment. It also reflects council's commitment to maintaining and improving the quality of our roads, which are vital for residents, businesses and of course, emergency services. By refreshing this panel arrangement, we are not only ensuring continuity of supply, but also encouraging innovation and efficiency amongst our suppliers. This is a smart, forward-looking investment in the materials that underpin our city's mobility and connectivity. Indeed, heaven is in a grain of sand. And I commend the contracting plan to the chamber and look forward to seeing the benefits it delivers for Brisbane. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston.
Sorry, it's just saying, there we go, thank you, it's just reset. I rise to speak on item A, the new lease to the powerhouse. It's a little bit shocking, and I see the Lord Mayor is not here. It's a little bit shocking to read what is actually in these documents today. And I think the truth of this is that this administration essentially strong-armed the powerhouse when it engaged in the current lease that it is in now with respect to the financial terms that are in the lease. Because they are quite shocking. If you look at a couple of the key numbers, you can see that the lease started, when it started, it was $567,360. Just four years later, that figure has increased to $692,170. Now, over the course of, one, two, three, four, five years, that's a $125,000 increase in their rent. Now, that's phenomenal. That's a phenomenal amount of money that we are taking out of an artistic organisation, which the Lord Mayor claims to support. So the truth of what is happening with this rebate that is now being retrospectively inserted into the leasing arrangement is undoing a great wrong that has been done to the powerhouse and to the arts community. And I imagine these onerous leasing terms are a handbrake on their services, their artistic endeavours, their creativity, their investment in the premises. Because this is unconscionable. This is unconscionable behaviour by council. Now, the fact that council is proposing to do rebates, which decrease, they are decreasing these rebates, they don't extend over the life of the term of the lease. They will barely go about offsetting some of the unconscionable rates, or sorry, lease payment increases that this LNP administration is forcing on the powerhouse. Now, the powerhouse bears some responsibility here because, did they look at the terms of this before they signed it? Because that would be the first question I've got. But the increases under this lease agreement are unconscionable. And for councillor Howard and the Lord Mayor and others to stand up and say, oh, we're doing right by the powerhouse, you are simply partially correcting a great wrongdoing against one of the city's major cultural organisations. These rebates simply demonstrate that council entered into an unconscionable lease with the powerhouse five years ago on terms that are, well, to be honest, exploitative. This is an organisation that is managed by council. It's council facility. They are completely responsible for maintaining it, improving it, fixing it, doing all of that. And for the privilege of having this building, council are charging them a fortune in lease payments and other payments in terms of their capital investment to the facility. And now council are standing up going, oh, look at us, we're providing this great rebate. You are simply fixing, and not even properly fixing it, I don't think, what is an unconscionable leasing arrangement on the powerhouse in Brisbane. Now, this LNP administration should be ashamed that it's had to come in here and is trying to claim that this is some great thing when you are simply attempting to undo a great wrongdoing, an unconscionable impost upon the creative community of Brisbane. If these lease payments continue to increase, so it's a 22% increase over five years, this is a 20-year lease, we're going to be up to a 100% increase in the lease payments over the term of the lease. Now, council's rebates won't undo all of that. They don't. They don't match up with the huge increases in the lease terms that are in here. The LNP should be ashamed of their behaviour and exploiting...
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Hutton.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak in support of the item B, the significant contracting plan for sand. Now, Madam Chair, I am rising to speak about the product that we use in our concrete, in our asphalt and obviously in natural disasters. So the first contract actually has the asphalt production for Eagle Farm and Riverview, followed by concrete production in Brickalba and then finally for sandbagging. And then the fourth category is actually alternative and add-value products. So I just wanted to touch on that. So in my area, I have actually got Cementco. And so I've been on a tour at Cementco to find out what they get up to. And they use a really interesting product called graphene. Now, the procurement in front of us today actually acknowledges graphene as one of the alternative options, which actually builds strength into our concrete production. And so it's really exciting to see this panel actually acknowledging the innovation in this space. And so I just wanted to quickly talk about how councillor Chong Wah was acknowledging the sustainability element. So graphene will actually be a great product in actually improving the sustainability of concrete. We also use other products like recycled glass in our asphalt production. And so that is also, yes, I can hear councillor Wine's agreeing with me, that is actually also as part of that alternative value for money product in that category four. So we are actually achieving our sustainability goals through this innovative procurement plan. I do actually also want to touch on councillor Chong Wah said that the environmental licence of the sand suppliers was not enough. Now, I don't know if anyone's actually ever tried to apply for an environmental licence via the state government. It is an extremely rigorous process. And I actually think it is acceptable for us as local government to accept that the licence that these providers have actually achieved via the state government is an acceptable level of environmental standard. I don't think that we should be adding extra red tape to these people because I can tell you that that is actually just going to add extra layers of cost and complexity onto ourselves. So I'm very comfortable with what the state government has done in the environmental space and what they are doing in supporting these businesses undertaking the activities they are doing. I also then just wanted to touch on some of the comments that councillor Cassidy had. So councillor Cassidy was very critical of the tropical cyclone sandbagging efforts. Can I say, Madam Chair, I actually find it so disappointing. And you know what? The team out there worked their tails off. And so it's really disgraceful for the opposition to come in here and really bag our team. They did an exceptional job. And I really want to put on record our gratitude to all of the people who went above and beyond during that time. They did a great job. Now, I do want to touch on what actually happened. There was 1,400 tonnes of sand delivered to the depots, by which our great teams put together sandbags and 1,400 tonnes actually delivered to our residents. Now, on the self-serve side, there was 5,600 tonnes delivered to the self-serve sites, where our residents were able to get 574,000 sandbags. Now, Madam Chair, for the opposition to claim that this is a fail is actually ridiculous. And can I say, the people of Brisbane know it. The people of Brisbane know just how hard our teams worked, how well this council worked during that cyclone. And for the opposition to come into this chamber and say otherwise is disgraceful. I commend this procurement to the chamber.
Further speakers, councillor Massey.
Thanks, Chair. I rise to speak to item A. The Brisbane powerhouse is one of the city's most vital and vibrant cultural centres. Once an industrial power station, it's been reimagined as a true powerhouse of creativity, a place where theatre, music, comedy, festivals and ideas come alive. I even remember it. I was a teenager then, I shouldn't share this, but there were secret gigs in the powerhouse before it got renovated and it was a lot of fun. It has become a hub, not only that it attracts world-class talent, but also supports local artists, not just at a local level in Brisbane, but also emerging artists from across Australia, giving them a platform to share their stories. Recently, I attended the worst-pressed photo exhibition, the 2025 ones. I usually attend them and like most years, I was deeply moved. The powerhouse, however, like many other arts and creative institutions, has faced its fair share of challenges before COVID, during COVID and after. And in many ways, while it has risen to these challenges, it's not separate from them. I do commend the former CEO through Kate. I particularly liked the return of live music to the powerhouse, as it had been over a decade, I think, since live music had been at the powerhouse. But the thing is, institutions like the powerhouse and many other small to medium arts organisations are not immune from the challenges. Cuts in funding, rising costs, including rents, the impacts of inflation, which have affected both operations and attendance. The cost of living pressures are hitting both sides. Artists, already some of the lowest paid workers in our economy, are struggling to afford housing and workspace. And audience facing higher living costs are finding it harder to buy tickets. Small to medium venues, even large venues like the powerhouse, even Queensland Ballet that had to cut 27 staff recently. And live music venues, any sort of theatre, are getting squeezed from all ends. Brisbane is also facing an exodus of talent and staffing. We're talking about crew and we're talking about talent. They're moving to places where creativity is more supportive. So if the powerhouse is the jewel of Brisbane's creative life, if it is the jewel, and we can recognise the small to medium arts organisations are the backbone of our cultural ecosystem, they are where innovation happens. And this is also in the powerhouse, of course. Emerging talent is fostered and local communities see their own stories reflected on the stage. Then it's important that I say a couple of things, which is I want to be a part of a council that does not close creative spaces, that does not create more restrictions on creative spaces. I don't want to be a part of a council that closed down maker spaces. I want to be a part of a council that goes further to support local independent artists and enables access to affordable creative spaces to practise, develop and perform art. There's a lot of stake for Brisbane artists and performing companies in places like the powerhouse at the moment. If they can't find a space to thrive, Brisbane becomes a poorer and less vibrant city. So if everyone in this room has stood up and talked about how the powerhouse is a symbol of what can be achieved when we focus on creativity, why don't we make the rents free? This lease doesn't go far enough. If we want to support an organisation that is maintaining a heritage building, where is their community lease? Why are we not making the powerhouse lease rent-free? Especially as we're seeing the exodus to this community. If we want to say that we support the powerhouse, let's go further. In fact, I say let's go further for every small to medium arts organisation that has a lease from council. Because if we truly believe that we're going to go to the games as a creative city, we need to invest in our creative centres. And one way of doing that is literally reducing the cost that we cost them. So put your money where your mouth is, make the rent free.
Further speakers, councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I too rise to speak on item B. And unlike the opposite side of the chamber, Madam Chairman, we don't treat sand like Dorito crumbs on our onesie. We actually put some thought into what we are acquiring because everyone knows that you cannot build castles on sand. But you can build the foundations for that castle with sand. And sand is a very important component, as many of the previous speakers have highlighted. Sand is a crucial component in the construction of concrete, mortar and also asphalt. Now, when we also look at the papers here, there is a quality component in the papers that speaks to the level of sand that we require, the quality of sand that we require and the material documentation that we require for that sand. the material documentation that we require for that sand to deliver durable and lasting products for the ratepayers of Brisbane. Now, that sparked my interest. Well, what do we look for in sand? Has anybody ever asked? Is sand is just sand? You know, you find it on the beach, you find it on the creek. It's not the same, no. So the three important things that we look for in sand is grading, which attributes to workability and the use of that sand within that product. Shape is very important. And we heard councillor Hutton talk about graphene. Graphene is a binding agent. It's made of carbon. It has a hexagonal configuration. So does sand. So the use of round sand or sand that's, that's polished on a beach is very different to the rough sand that you would find in a creek. Rough sand has irregular edges, is a binding agent for concrete and gives it its strength. And it's rough. The other thing that's very important in the quality of sand is its cleanliness. You don't want organic material in our sand. And some people may say, why? Why don't you want organic material in the sand? It is bad. Thank you for the interjection, councillor Marks. It is bad. It contributes to cracking and contributes to failure. So you lose the binding effect that you get with sand. Now, many people seem to think that construction sand is just sand. Well, no, you, you can't use sand that is intended for mortar in the production of concrete. It just doesn't work. It's a different kind of sand. And this is the importance of what we're doing here. We're selecting the right sand for the right job, for the right application, so that we can deliver value to the ratepayers of Brisbane. I just want to focus on a couple of things that some previous speakers spoke about. Councillor Cassidy talked about cost. He mentioned cost half a dozen times, eight times. Did not talk about innovation. Did not talk about the use of recycled sand, the value of recycled sand and the saving of the mining of sand with the use of recycled sand, which reduces carbon offsets. You're not having to dig it up, you're not having to transport it as far, it's reduced locally. These are the attributes that recycled sand has. It also reduces our landfill, which helps us immensely. Councillor Chong Wah talked about there's no sustainability. You know, we're just throwing the sustainability out there. You need a licence for this, you need a licence for that. No sustainability. We are putting more into our asphalt and concrete these days than previous councillors. We are recycling our road base, which is saving us from mining in quarries. We are recycling glass. We are putting tyres into asphalt. We are doing all the things that any innovative council would do to reduce the use of raw materials within our network. Sorry, councillor. We're guided by our own. TMR. We're guided by the Transport Main Road Rules. Thank you very much. I learnt that the other day when I went to have a look at some bridgework. Thank you. So this council, this council is actually leading the innovation in the use of recycled products. We are not only saving sand from being mined from our rivers, but we're also saving our quarries from being mined as well. We're reusing many, many products. We were the first council, the first large council.
Councillor Toomey, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. And I'll, I want to speak on, on the second item on the E N C report. But I just want to say initially, it's just incredible. I'm shocked, I'm dismayed that the actual members on the other side are actually getting up and actually speaking about, about the items in E N C. It's been a long time.
Yes.
It's been a long time.
Councillor Strunk, can you come back to the report please?
Yeah, and I just finally want to say, if I may, Chair, that I hope councillor Adams doesn't get up and say we're all filibustering. Because there's been some, there's been some great information coming out of all the speeches on these two items.
Can we hear some now, please, councillor Strunk?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. Thanks for your indulgence. Okay, I just never thought I was going to get up and speak about sand. And, but it's, it's a fascinating product. It's been around for, well, billions of years, literally. And, and of course, it's been used in, in, in product making, concrete especially, of course, for thousands of years. I think the Romans invented it, but I think they actually stole the, the, the recipe from the, from the Greeks. But anyways, it's, it's a fascinating product. And I was fascinated also to find out how much increase over the last four years it had gone up, which was well above CPI. But it's important that we keep abreast, as a business, Brisbane City Council is a business, that we keep abreast of what's, what's happening in those products that we need to continue to build this city. And I would have thought that the suppliers, but maybe they didn't, didn't tell you that there, these major increases, almost 10% a year, right, were, were coming through. But what I didn't hear was the Lord Mayor talk about a strategy to overcome those huge increases that may be coming through in the next contract, right? And what strategies would be put into place in the contract, this contract, right, for the four years following? Maybe, maybe there should have been some consideration made on putting a cap on, on the increase or a ceiling on the increase. Maybe that could have been factored into the contract, but maybe, maybe the suppliers wouldn't do that, I don't know. But I tell you what happens in retail when you get, when you find out that there's going to be a major increase in your product. You buy against the increase and then you store that product. Now, sand's something really easy to store and it doesn't change in quantity or qual, or sorry, in quality over that storage time. It doesn't, it doesn't go out of fashion, right? As, as some retail products do, which would be much harder to buy against the increase, right? But you know, we should be thinking about a strategy, knowing that if there's going to have been a 38% increase over the last four years, and it can't be because of Covid. Quite frankly, it's a local product. The transport wouldn't have gone up all that much as well, I wouldn't have thought. And it's local, something that we source here just outside of Brisbane, right? So I would have been, I would have been really, would have been nice to hear from the, from the Lord Mayor, a strategy going forward to try to minimise the cost increase that we're going to have in the next four, at the end of this particular contract, right? That's what good business people do. That's what, that was what people that have foresight, that are looking after ratepayers' money should be doing. And that's what we should be doing and that's what the Lord Mayor should have talked about after telling us that there's, there's been huge increase in the cost of sand. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for afternoon tea for 15 minutes, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
Seconded. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that the meeting adjourn for a period of 15 minutes, which commences only when all councils have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber. Further speakers. Councillor Howard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'm pleased to speak in support of item A, an amendment to the lease agreement with the Brisbane Powerhouse. And Madam Chair, through you, I think some of the performances that we've heard here this afternoon might very well be worthy of auditioning because, because, yes, I'm sure, because once again, the opposition have revealed their complete and utter financial ineptitude. They thought an abatement, a rent reduction, was a rent increase. When we called them out, they changed tack to claim that under this agreement, rent would be higher, not compared to last year or the year before that, or the year before that, but higher than 2020. What happened in 2020, Madam Chair? Does anyone remember? Something very important. The Covid-19 pandemic happened, Madam Chair. And as part of it, there was a significant one-off rent reduction provided to the powerhouse. So you can't believe the Labour spin, Madam Chair, and the numbers do not lie. The current rent charged to the powerhouse is $692,170. With the rent abatement and an assumed 3% inflation rate, in year one, rent will be In year two, $307,587. In year three, $316,720. In year four, $520,235. And in year five, $631,637. So in five years, it will still be $60,000 lower than what it is now. Madam Chair, council has provided this extremely generous incentive to further support Brisbane Powerhouse to improve the experience for visitors. This is in addition to the significant investment council makes to maintain the building and the, the generous operational funding. We provided this to the, to the powerhouse to program the venue for the benefit of Brisbane. Council has just executed a new four-year agreement with the powerhouse, which included a generous uplift to their funding. This uplift, in support provided by council across the board, far exceeded the expectation of the powerhouse board and is already poised to deliver an outcome. Madam Chair, this is a timely and thoughtful measure that will help out one of our city's most important cultural institutions continue to thrive. The Brisbane Powerhouse is not just a venue, it's a creative engine. It's where bold ideas take shape, where artists find their voice and where audiences discover something new, surprising and often unforgettable. From major festivals to grassroots performances, the powerhouse delivers a programme that is as diverse as Brisbane itself. It's a place where international acts share the stage with emerging local talent, where communities gather to celebrate, reflect and connect. And it's not just about what happens on stage. The powerhouse is a precinct that draws people in with its riverside location, its hospitality offerings and its unmistakable energy. It's a place where culture meets lifestyle and where every visit feels like a celebration of Brisbane's creative spirit. This lease amendment provides a temporary rent rebate, starting at 6% in 2025 and gradually stepping down to 18% by 2029. It is designed to give the powerhouse the flexibility to invest in its infrastructure and plan for the future. That means better technology and improved seating, upgrades that will directly benefit artists, audiences and staff. And let's be clear, this support is in addition to the funding council already provides. Earlier this year, we delivered a new four-year funding agreement with the powerhouse, which included an uplift to support their programming visions. That agreement reflects our ongoing commitment to the precinct and this lease amendment builds on that foundation. With new leadership on the way, Louise Bazin is stepping in as CEO and artistic director, the powerhouse is entering an exciting new chapter. I want to take a moment to thank the incredible team at the powerhouse, their passion and professionalism, their chair, Val May Hill.
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further speakers. Councillor Kim.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on clause B regarding point 15, page three of the E N C report, because something clearly went wrong during the Cyclone Alfred weather disaster earlier this year, causing large and unprecedented queues of residents panicking to shore up their homes, with many residents turned away all across Brisbane, despite council advising residents to turn up and collect sandbags. Not only this, but we saw via metadata records that the public was given less than 90 minutes notice that sandbagging stations were closing on the last evening, which someone in this organisation was clearly embarrassed about, causing them to remove the evidence off the council website. I've got the metadata, I've got the screenshots there to prove it. This council was in need of desperate reform and should learn from the mistakes of the last weather emergency event our city faced while they go through this contract today. If the L N P believe they did a great job servicing sand to local residents, I ask that they invite all local councillors from all sides to be briefed at the same time on operations and appropriate to the same information that those opposite are. But through several examples we saw earlier this year in debate, we know this was not a shared experience from everyone. With reference to point 13 and category four of E N C, alternative and value-add products, can I also include a suggestion that the use of a recycling programme for tyres could greatly benefit our city? I know earlier this year in the Old City Standards Committee presentation, there were examples of roads resurfaced using some of this material and old tyres. With dumping as a huge problem in our ward and tyres that cannot be accepted by our waste services, it's no surprise that some resort to dumping them on our streets as the only alternative, is only to pay a recycling, to pay a visit to the local tyre shop and to pay a fee to recycle your tyre. Interestingly, with our policy, you can't take a tyre to the dump, but you do get them collected by council if they're illegally dumped. They won't be collected during curbside collection either. Ipswich City Council has a resource centre dedicated to collecting tyres. Myself and residents see more room for improvement here that Brisbane City Council could learn from. Finally, according to the latest R O C Q Road Safety Survey, 302 people died on Queensland roads this last year. Fatalities have occurred across several roads in my ward, one only this month in Callumbell and another elderly grandmother who was struck and taken to the hospital in Stretton. Prior to this, I've seen a motorcycle spin-off track after riding into a pothole. In 2024, contracted road maintenance and the resurfacing team.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order, councillor Hutton.
While I don't disagree with councillor Kim's summary of incidents that have happened in her ward, it's really not in the E N C contract.
Thank you, councillor Hutton. Councillor Kim, can you please come back to the report?
Thank you, Chair. With preparation, knowing that this would happen, with reference to point 13 and category four is what I'm talking on today. And just to finish my statement, I continue to support the need for further development in this clause as an urgent priority from this council. It's ultimately the essential function of what we are as a local government and these decisions are affecting people's lives every single day. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. No further speakers. We'll now put that to the vote. All those in favour say aye. Those against no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Collier. Eyes to my right, nose to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and seven abstentions.
That is carried. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillor Wines, Public Transport Committee.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Public Transport Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of August 2025 be adopted.
Seconded, Madam Chairman.
It has been moved by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Toomey that the report of the Public Transport Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 12th of August 2025 be adopted. Councillor Wines.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Look, just carrying on from some of the, some of the comments I was making in question time, that the leader of the opposition, councillor Cassidy in particular, but the Labor councillors generally and their associates on the other benches, do pick and choose their stats to suit the arguments rather than the truth. And my point that the questions on notice were clearly attempting to separate metro payments from bus payments was an attempt to compare the two figures in the future to show that the new circumstance is unfavourable, as we saw in the Labor Party's Brisbane Now newsletter, when they did the same thing with vehicles. newsletter, when they did the same thing with vehicles today. But I know that that is true, because when I made mention of this, Councillor Cassidy made a comment, I suppose, about my appearance rather than my argument, which speaks to the fact that I'm probably right. And we'll find out in the coming weeks how right I am about this, but I would say substantially, I would expect that these figures will be manipulated and presented in a not honest way to advance an argument that isn't true. Now, today's presentation, the presentation under consideration today from the committee last week, was on the BNBN rollout, which of course is the single largest change and improvement to the Brisbane Bus Network in some decades, some would say this century. And it sees a significant uplift in our capacity to move people and our capacity to grow into the future. So, council buses, as most would know, carry about two-thirds of all public transport journeys in the city, and it underlines the importance of the network. The network covers more than 200 urban routes and supports 80 million journeys per year, enabled by advanced infrastructure such as the South East Busway and a series of inner-city tunnels. Brisbane's buses take us to all kinds of locations, whether it be home or work, schools, healthcare, social and cultural experiences, among many, many others. Now, as we know, the system was working at capacity, particularly the Inner South Tunnel and Victoria Bridge. That's why these changes were called for and necessary. We saw with growing population, the need for growing services, which again, the new contract and BNBN accommodate the potential for growth. We know that the Adelaide Street Tunnel will also give us back much of the surface for pedestrians and recreation here in Adelaide Street, and that tunnel will be open very soon. Now, the new network sees five brand-new routes, 12 redesigned suburban routes, expanded coverage and simplified journeys. More than 102,000 new trips have been added, covering over 1.5 million extra kilometres and contributing an extra 84,000 additional operator work hours to our system. Key features are that there is new express services, more direct connections, and more residential services with improved integration, and of course, the key hub-and-spoke model, which sits at the heart of this, the servicing of the metro. Now, there's been a great deal of work been put into communication, which I'll come to probably in the second round of discussion, but there is something that I wanted to respond to in advance, I suppose, we'll put it that way. I suspect that there'll be a number of tired cliché speeches where Labour councillors will say, "Ex-person from ex-suburb has had some negative experience, and that's all your fault." Well, what can I... It is, says Councillor Strunk, "In advance." He doesn't even have an example, but he knows that it is. Such is the burden. But I say that Labour councillors are misleading people and providing false information, and in some instances scaring people who don't need to be scared. For example, I see Joan from Holland Park is telling people that she used to have a direct bus to Spring Hill, but now she has to catch two, sometimes three, when she wants to go to Spring Hill or the Cultural Centre. Now, we know that the 175 bus would leave that community and travel into the city where Joan could catch a free Spring Hill loop-up to the bus, or if she wanted to go to the Cultural Centre, go to the new, excuse me, upgraded Wollongaba Station and catch the high-frequency service down into the Cultural Centre. The 175 is available to her, and I know from viewing episodes on the internet on Brisbane Labour that Labour councillors misled that poor lady into thinking her circumstances were worse, when in fact, the 175 has become a high-frequency service.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Further speakers. Councillor Massey.
I'd just rise to speak briefly on this and the rollout of the new bus network, noting, as I begin, that I want to note that the residents of the GABA represented multiple suburbs in the top five, locations for respondents to the initial consultation in 2022. And these suburbs that gave feedback, including West End, want something simple, a bus service that they can rely on, a service that they can rely to get them to work or school without being late, a service that they can rely to connect them to shops, to healthcare, or to their community and other events, and a service they can rely that turns up on time. Because obviously, far too often, residents are left waiting as one in five buses on the metro run late and multiple buses across the city, one in five.
How many egg whites are in there?
Three.
Three. Okay, there you go.
Okay, Lucy, come here.
I don't mind an interruption like that. And, you know, this is a, and they're left waiting, and I just want to highlight these things particularly for some certain areas. We know people are left waiting because of the 60, which again, is a great bus. I won't call it the GOAT of all Brisbane buses, because I do think that's the 199. But the 60 is a great service, but particularly in peak hour, it's quite full, and I do appreciate the addition of two extra buses. But of course, in this transition, West End, one of the top respondents, of course, lost the well-beloved 86. And I won't stop talking about it, and residents won't stop talking to me about it, but I'll keep talking about it. What I want to note is so much of the new bus network is pinned against a trunk and branches and routes and the delivery of that infrastructure. And we know that it is important to have rapid transport and truck. Again, the challenges, and I say this as an inner-city suburb, right, a high-density inner-city suburb, there are still challenges with where these branches and routes go to. And I appreciate, through you, Chair, what Councillor Wines said. Said the potential, the option, the room, I believe, for further improvements. And so while I'm here and have the opportunity, I will request further improvements for West End that need increases in high frequency, for Dutton Park who have lost their rapid frequency bus through Dutton Park Place station, bus stop. I'll also request that people in Kangaroo Point, which only have the 234, get an increase in frequency and reliability. While I'm at it, I'll also talk about Highgate Hill, because of course, there's, Highgate Hill is serviced by the 196 and the 198. The 198 was a little bit of a victim from the changes in 2011, maybe 2012. So frequency was reduced there for that hail and stop, but also the 196, I'm receiving a lot of reports from Highgate Hill residents that they're waiting for a very long time and running late to go to work, and that's something that we don't want. So while, again, I say high frequency on the trunk is needed, it's those branches and routes that need work, and through you, Chair, I look forward to the improvements in the network that Councillor Wines has been saying are going to be possible.
Further speakers. Councillor Toomey.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I rise to pass a few comments on the presentation in the committee. And what we heard from Councillor Wines, some of the stats, and as impressive as they are, over 100,000 additional trips added to the year, an extra 84,000 work hours have been added to the network. I knew we were on to something big when I had young Paddy Jackson walk into the office, and you would have heard me mention Paddy before. But Paddy, I think, I don't know whether he has an admiration for myself or Councillor Wines, because it all started with the Gresham Street Bridge, and then has now moved over to the metro. And I know the stats are important, but one thing we haven't touched on here is the excitement and the gratitude that some of our young are enjoying with our new bus network. I went round to the local coffee shop, Sweet Crumbs, had a coffee, and Paddy and his grandmother were there. And Paddy's four, so he's not quite at school yet, and Grandma said, "Don't know what we're going to do today." And I said to Paddy, "Do you have, have you downloaded the new Translink app onto Granny's phone?" And he was like, "No, we haven't done that yet." So we did that, and then he had a look and he said, "What have you got on today, mate?" He says, "Well, I haven't really got anything to do." And I said, "Have you been on the metro?" And he was, "No, I haven't." I said, "Well, take Granny down to Rochedale." And he said, "What's that going to cost me?" And I said, "Mate, it'll cost Granny nothing, but for you, it'll be 50 cents." And the ayes lit up, like this little guy was so excited that he was going to go on the metro, you know, something new, something innovative, something that just speeds up our whole network. And I said to him, "Paddy, when you finish your trip, when you come back home, pop in and see me, and tell me what you think." Because I was really after the feedback from Paddy. Paddy walked in through the office, and Chair, can I tell you, he had a smile from one ear to the other. He was grinning like a Cheshire cat. And I said to him, "What was the best thing about the metro?" And he said, "Steve," because that's what he calls me, "he said, 'Steve,' it was how fast it went. It was super fast.'" He absolutely loved the speed of the metro when it was going down the South East Busway, absolutely loved it. Madam Chairman, I know that we are on a good thing with this, and I know that my residents have passed comment on the disconnect with the 385 going over to the Cultural Centre. But the reality is, is that that disconnection is actually going to be a benefit. And I've tested this myself, I've jumped on the 385, I've ridden into Roma Street, I've made the change, and I've gone over to the Cultural Centre. You're saving two, two and a half minutes on the bus network just getting to the Cultural Centre, let alone waiting for the 385 to turn around. The time-saving is huge. But what is wonderful is that when the tunnel opens, it's going to go faster, because it's not even bypassing Queen Street anymore, it's going straight through. So the long-term benefits of this trunk infrastructure are going to be huge for our city, and I am actually looking forward to the additional metros coming online in the future, because they truly are going to reshape our city and the way that we move around this city. And I think once people understand the excitement and the thrill of getting on the metro and getting around the city a lot quicker than you used to, is going to be of significant benefit, not only to the residents who are touring our city, but also to workers, also to those who are trying to get to work. You know, for the western suburbs, the importance for most of the people in the western suburbs is to get into the city on time. They're not so much concerned about getting home on time, probably because, you know, they've got to deal with kids and everything else, you know, all the things that the rest of us deal with. But the importance is getting into town. And this metro and the supporting infrastructure with the metro helps people get to work on time, helps them get to do the things that they do, and also, in reverse, gets them home sooner and safer and quicker. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Further speakers. Councillor Johnston.
Yes, I rise to speak on this presentation about Brisbane's new bus network launch, and I'm fascinated by Councillor Toomey's interaction with the four-year-old and granny.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the interjection, which was clearly heard across the chamber, but that's fine. It's fascinating, isn't it, that Councillor Toomey's feedback about the metro is not related to his own area, and improvements to bus services in his own area, which he acknowledges are worse and there is a problem, but his praise...
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Point of order, Councillor Toomey.
Claimed to be severely misrepresented.
I note your point of misrepresentation.
Okay, there's no problem with the disconnection with 385, and, you know, I don't know what you meant then, if you're saying there's a disconnection. But anyway, let's put all that aside. Councillor Toomey's example is essentially a tourist opportunity for a four-year-old to go on a trip to just have a look at something. It's not about functionally improving this child's access to their local schools or facilities. This is a one-off event for the kid to go and have a look at the new metro. Now, the vast majority of people in Brisbane, that's their experience of the metro, because it doesn't come anywhere near them. Now, I know this because these are the LMP's figures about the new bus network, and these are the figures that the Lord Mayor will gloss over every single time. Only 53% of people are getting a faster bus service under the new Brisbane Bus Network, including the metro services. So that's just over half of bus users in Brisbane are getting a better service than they were before council spent 1.85, nearly $2 billion by the time this is finished. Only half the people of Brisbane are getting a better or faster bus service. Forty-seven percent of people are getting the same or a worse service. And again, 1.85 billion, nearly $2 billion of public funds, and 47% of bus users are getting the same or a worse bus service. This is the reality of what the LMP has done to the city of Brisbane. Now, if you live along the metro route, I'm sure it's great, like, it's a lovely service, and it whizzes, it whizzes straight through. In my area, can't get on it because it doesn't stop on the busway at Dutton Park. Despite it being on the busway and a key stop on the 66, the bus that it replaced, it doesn't stop at Dutton Park Station. So, you know, there's that. Yeah, oh well, yeah, I know. The Lord Mayor Public said on radio it did, but it doesn't. But the reality of this for most people, and that's people in my ward who don't have access to the metro or are forced onto it through a change, is that 47% of people are getting the same or a worse service. Now, I've been doing this for 17 years. In my experience and in my view, it is essential that when you spend almost $2 billion of public funds, people see an improvement. They see it broadly, they see it benefiting as many people as possible, and they see it in delivering value. None of those things are true about this LMP council's botched, Paris-style, light metro underground slash big banana bendy bus metro. None of it. And the shame of all of this is the LMP will stand up and they talk about the metro figures. Of course, there's more people on the metro. You cut all the buses, forcing people onto the metro.
Like there's more people on Kangaroo Point Bridge?
Yeah, more people on Kangaroo Point Bridge, because, could that be because the story bridge has been shut? Yes, of course, and that's the only way I'm crossing to town now. I mean, oh my God, slap me in the face, that's such a complicated issue to understand, isn't it? It is, it is. I mean, if you can be out there sort of proclaiming that you're doing a great job because you shut one bridge, funneled everybody onto the other bridge, and claiming there's a win, I don't think that's a positive. But I will, I will never, ever accept that after spending almost $2 billion in public funds, that 47% of people see no benefit from it, or about 20% of that 47% are actually getting a worse service. Now, I know that.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired.
And it's not good enough.
Councillor Toomey, your point of misrepresentation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The point that I made about the changes to the 385 were there, they were an improvement to my area, to my network, to my residents. And the last point I would like to make, Madam Chairman, is it's, it's quite visual, the fact that the independent council of Ternison doesn't give a damn about the thoughts of a four-year-old.
Further speakers. Councillor Dixon. Actually, just one moment, Councillor Dixon, we'll wait until Councillor Chongwar and Councillor Griffith stop making so much noise. Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to rise to speak on item A, Brisbane's new bus network launch. Brisbane is a growing city, we could see that last night with over 500 new residents receiving their citizenship. They say approximately 600 new people are arriving in Brisbane each week, so it's They say approximately 600 new people are arriving in Brisbane each week, so it's safe to say that we're not a country town no more. With the growth that we continue to see, we need to ensure that our transport needs are ready for the now and into the future. In last week's presentation, we learnt that the launch of the new buswork network is designed to move more people more efficiently while connecting our suburbs. Already, you can see for yourself that congestion is being busted on the Victoria Bridge. What a difference it has made since 30 June. The launch of the Brisbane's new buswork is about catering for our city to keep Brisbane moving now and for many decades to come. This network is about delivering a faster, more frequent and better connected transport system for everyone, whether you're a tourist, a resident, commuter, or student, or little patty from councillor Toomey's area. It's not only the public transport users that are giving this new bus network a thumbs up. Our all-important drivers are also providing really positive feedback about the changes that we heard about in the presentation last week as well. Brisbane metros proving to be very popular as well, and not a week goes by I don't get positive feedback about this new mass transit system. In fact, you know it's big when Jimmy Reese is mentioning them in his videos on Instagram. For those who don't know who Jimmy Reese is, you may remember him from Giggle and Hoot fame. You get to do some interesting things in this role, but through you, Chair, a highlight has been boarding the first metro service from Eight Miles Plains with my colleagues councillor Wines, councillor Huang, councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor. 4:30 AM was an early start and an even earlier start to get from the north side, but it was worth it. So I can share councillor Toomey through you, Chair, his thoughts on the excitement because you could see a lot of excited people on that day for the launch of the Brisbane new bus network. I think the transition to a two-seat journey for some people has been a real game changer for Brisbane. But Chair, before I conclude my remarks, I just want to thank the council officers who have worked with Translink to do the community outreach, to ensure that everyone was prepared for the changes that came on the 30th of June. It would have been a big effort to organise such a widespread, spread community strategy, communication strategy, especially as you couldn't miss the signs on every bus stop. So thank you, Chair. I will conclude my comments there.
Further speakers, councillor Kim.
Thank you. Firstly, I'd like to thank the Chair of Transport and for watching our Brisbane Labor Instagram page and following our content online. I'm sure he's got many priorities in his new role and one of them is keeping up to date with Brisbane Now this morning and also the Brisbane Labor page. It's a shame that more than half of his speech as a Chair of Transport was spent attacking a real resident's story instead of sharing his vision with us while Brisbane remains the worst for traffic congestion in our nation. Joan is one of the many seniors of Brisbane who now can't catch a bus to Marder Hill and rely on public transport. Millions of dollars spent on introducing a new network and 32% of trips don't have change. Let alone the latest statistic where two-thirds of Brisbane who still can't get access to high-frequency services in Brisbane. This impacts all of our outer wards regardless of which political party councillors represent. We're still walking more than a K to get to bus stops in Maruka, Forest Lake, more than two Ks in Polara. We were promised two extra bus stops in last financial year's budget and we still see no progress here. What the LNP council has done is forgotten about our Jones and put figures on paper. The chairs of transport is embarrassed it takes 15 minutes to take an Uber back home for Joan compared to just under an hour by bus. These are real stories, not small-minded ones. Here's another one from today, sent directly to me this morning in a message by a Brisbane resident. By all means, the Chair of Transport can pretend it's not happening, but it's the real people of Brisbane he's ignoring and sadly we have to tell them that. Recently, a resident caught a bus just this morning from Queen Street heading towards Andropili, arriving five minutes before the bus was due. He ended up waiting 45 minutes because his bus was cancelled, the one behind him was cancelled and the one behind that was 25 minutes late. Two other passengers waiting there had to get to Roma Street to get the tilt train up to Bundaberg, which only leaves once daily. They almost missed their train because they were waiting 45 minutes for a bus. While waiting for the 453, 454 or the 460, the residents counted dozens of out-of-service buses and over 20 metros. They are the only buses connecting the Centenary suburbs, Ginderley, Mount Ominy, River Hills to the city on weekdays. So entire suburbs rely on these routes. Councillor Wines can waste his important portfolio obsessing over our social media, but he's forgetting to answer the million-dollar question. How can council spend all this money on metro for the inner city, but residents in the suburbs still can't get frequent or reliable buses? Councillor Wines can attack real stories all he wants, but deep down he knows there's a problem. No amount of him complaining about us bringing real stories of real people will stop us from continuing to advocate for those who aren't being represented by this LNP council. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers, councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I love the fact that councillor Kim was so strung up on trying to get a real resident that she had to get one of my residents to do on her social media this morning. Must be so many rushing to her door, the way they're pleading for people to sign their petition on issues that they have with their buses. They've even got their state members in now, trying to do a bit of data harvesting on their bus petitions as well. The one thing I can say from my 18 years here is that change is constant. And change is not liked by people. They are very scared of change, but it is constant. Unfortunately, with our buses not so constant as should have been over the last 20 years, and this is the biggest change that we've seen on buses since the 90s, when we had changes in numbers. And it is different. But different does not mean worse. Different does not mean bad. As councillor Dixon said, we are a growing city. No one here can argue that we are not a growing city. And as we go towards 2032, we need to update and modernise and come in step with the rest of the global cities around the world on step changes in our bus networks. And what that means is, yes, you may have a bi-modal transport system. Now, let's have a look at the very upset resident that councillor Kim had on her social media this morning, which she obviously got from Holland Park, who we've had a lot of correspondence with Joan. She was wearing a red jacket, which is really appropriate for her card-carrying, but let's just go back to Joan's actual issue, which my office has dealt with on multiple occasions. We actually sent correspondence to Joan with 20 maps inbound and outbound to explain the various destinations. And I assure you, Joan gave us more than 10 destinations she wanted to be going to faster than an Uber. I don't know councillor Kim, if you've just started catching buses, but Ubers have always been faster than buses. They are cars. I live eight kilometres from the city and guess what? An Uber is faster than a bus. But I'm a very frequent bus user because it's also easy and you don't get stuck in traffic. And it's also only 50 cents. So I assure you that Joan is probably not going to choose an Uber, even with the cost alone, the time.
Point of order councillor Kim.
Will councillor Adams take a question?
No.
Thank you. Councillor, point of order councillor Kim.
I also claim to be misrepresented.
Councillor Adams.
Thank you. And I'll use Joan's example because it does reflect a lot of the seniors in my ward. Many of them rely on the 175. And it used to come down through Logan Road. It still does. It's exactly the same path until it gets to Wall and Gabba. But in the interest of making sure that the Cultural Centre tunnel works better and we can move buses through the city faster, it now goes on at the Morrison Hotel and goes down through Mary and Margaret Street, depending on the inbound and outbound. What that means is residents like Joan will need to hop off the 175 if they want to go to Adelaide Street or if they want to go to the Cultural Centre of the Marder. But you hop off platform one, you stay on platform one and you catch either the 333, the 340, the 61, which will be there in less than five minutes. And you can go to any of those lines right through to Adelaide Street. Through Adelaide Street where you hop on the Free Spring Hill Loop to go up to the Doctors, as she mentioned. Which, which administration introduced that? Oh, that's right. It would have been our administration under, under Lord Mayor Newman, that gave the Free Spring Hill Loop for seniors to get up to the Doctors at Wickham Terrace. And back the other way, it's a very simple run from the 235 to hop back on the 175 at platform two and out again. This bus stop, mind you, has not changed. None of the bus stops have changed for the 175. But you know what has changed? It is double the frequency. It has amalgamated with the 174 and instead of coming every 30 to 40 minutes, it now comes every 15 to 20. Higher frequency, much quicker, much faster to get into town. And I can assure you, having done it several times myself, the 175 is much faster into town going through the Morrison and over the Riverside Expressway. The hyperbole we hear from the other side is getting tiresome. But I'd like to take my last 30 seconds to thank the council officers, as councillor Dixon did, on the work they did. There is not a bus stop that did not have a triangular advertisement around them. Translink officers are standing there. And of course, the Bible, which every ward that had changes got on every option and change that we go straight to and help our residents with as well. Change is scary, but it's not worse. If more than half have already been improved by two lines of the metro, imagine what we're going to do in the next couple of years. I commend the new network to the city, let alone the chamber. Thank you.
Councillor Kim, your point of misrepresentation.
Thank you, Chair. The councillor claimed that I didn't catch buses. I love buses, especially thanks to 50 cent fares. I also wanted to note for residents who do catch Ubers in our area in Polara, they have to because they have to walk more than two Ks.
Thank you councillor, just the point of misrepresentation. Are there any further speakers? Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'd just like to, a lot of people have been reading into the record some commentary from the public about the changes to the bus network and all real people. And these must be real people, the ones that I'm about to read, that have to be. They have to be because they're commenting on the Lord Mayor's post and he's responding to them. So let's see what some of these real people in Brisbane. He's not here responding to them, obviously. Don't know where he is. Probably at an LNP fundraiser currently, Lord Mayor. But here's some of the feedback that the Lord Mayor has received directly. Your idea of turn up and go just isn't working. You need far more vehicles for this to work. You still need to reduce the amount of regular buses that use the bridge for turn up and go to be even remotely viable. And therein lies the problem when you're only using, what is it, 43 metro buses on this so-called metro line? Congestion on the Victoria Bridge may be less, however, you've really peed the people off out in the suburbs who want to get into the city. It's, I can't say that one. Pooh, I guess I can say that. Once again, a fail on my report card for the bus changes, no improvement and more inconvenience in getting home much later. And another one, and all the people who suddenly fell into a black hole of no service and are no doubt leaping for joy. Here's another one. New bus routes are a joke and you should be ashamed. Absolutely no improvements. In fact, I live in Maruka and services are worse. And we've heard that over the last few weeks from councillor Griffiths as well. Another one, streets crumbling, rates rising and you're hopeless. Share that sentiment. And another one, I'm unbelievably happy. Not. I'm working the public holiday next week and the suggestion is that I can walk 1626 metres to get a bus that goes every hour. Now, now the LNP like to talk about, so the only real people, councillor Toomey did talk about a real person. Councillor Adams attacked a real person and councillor Wines relentlessly attacked.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
An elderly resident.
Point of order councillor Adams.
Claimed to be misrepresented.
I note your claim. Thank you councillor Johnston. Councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much. And councillor Wines talked about statistics as if people are just numbers on a spreadsheet. But we have been talking to real people, but you know, you can, you can sort of glean that by, by going to the Lord Mayor and LNP councillors' social media and seeing how they are getting called out on these changes before those, those comments disappear, of course. But we've also been out, councillor Adams seemed to be a bit confused between a survey and a petition. But we have, thank you for the plug, we have launched a survey. And in the last two days, we've had 133 responses just from the Holland Park Ward. And here's what the people, those 100, that's a small number, I concede so far, but that's just in one day. And that's going to grow exponentially. Would you say that your commute is longer than it was before? 68% of people said yes. Have the number of times you're required to transfer services increased? Yes, 53%. And would you say that you are happy or agree with the changes? 11% of people said yes. 75% of people said no and 14%, to be fair, were indifferent about that. So the LNP are running. They're running at the moment from this issue and they can get up here and they can stand in this council chamber and say there are no problems. They can even maybe believe the words that they're saying out loud, but it is not the lived experience of real people. We are getting, you know, hundreds a day now of people who are sharing their real lived experience, who are using public transport services that have been designed by LNP politicians in their everyday lives. And, yeah, yeah. And, and what we find out now, it's become really clear today that the Chair of the Public Transport Committee just spends all day scrolling on social media. He's conceded that today. That's all he does. Which is really concerning because if he actually went out there and spoke to people and got on some metro services, went down to the King George Square Busway Station and spoke to people who were, who were amazed to find that the 200-metre line that they were encountering for the first time ever was their service to catch a bus home. And they were better off walking halfway across the city to catch another bus. If he actually went down there and spoke to those people like we are and gathering these real-life stories, he would know they're in a bit of trouble. But I guess, you know, politically speaking, we're probably better off if they just hang out here in City Hall, patting each other on the back, saying everything's fine, because they are going to find out. They are going to find out soon that everything is not fine.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Further speakers.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Get your point of misrepresentation.
Thank you. I did not attack the residents. I said we have explained to her clearly the changes that need to be made and changes are not necessarily worse, but they are different.
Thank you councillor. Further, further speakers. Councillor Strunk.
Thank you, Chair. Just briefly, I just want to talk about the actual network out my way and what lack of improvements there have been in the network in the Forest Lake Ward. And I take, I take those percentages that councillor Johnson talked about, 53% say that it's a better service and 47% say it's a worse service. Well, or same or worse, neutral, same, worse. Well, you know, in any, in any grading curve, in any school, 53% would be a fail. And, but maybe, maybe not, maybe not in councillor Wines's education. Maybe, maybe that was, maybe that was a positive. I don't know. But anyways, in regards to, in regards to the network, listen, bus timetables is something that people continually come into my ward office and ask for. Now, it's important that we give them that information, say that upfront, but we never used to have to do that. It was out on a board in the library that they could easily access when they came in and we just said it's just in the library now. It used to be in the ward office, but the library decided, and that was fine, that they would, they would take it into their facility. So we're having to spend a lot of time just printing off bus timetables, right? The next thing, the J-poles, they're not been updated. And the ones that have been updated, of course, the bus timetables, they say, I'll just go to use the QR code on, on, on the, on the, on the, on the J-pole. Well, there's a lot of people that don't have smartphones, by the way. By choice too, by the way, right? Because they're easier to use if you don't have a smartphone. And of course, a lot of our seniors use the bus for obvious reasons because some don't have their licenses anymore. So they have to use public transport or Uber or, or the cab service. But, you know, it's just not fair on them, the way we have structured this new system. No bus timetables, paper ones that they can actually just quickly grab, pop, pop in their, in their, either in their coats or in their pocket. Their bags. Sorry. The other thing too is that the, the, the actual routes and the service of the routes through, through the ward have not improved at all. I would have hoped that more of the routes would have actually been able to interact with the train station at Richlands so that it's not parked out by seven o'clock every morning, Monday to Friday. All right. There's a lot of frustration that happens. Thank goodness people ring the state office when they get booked for parking illegally in the train station parking area. We used to get, we used to get a lot of those calls, but people know now it's a state government issue so that they ring the state office. And I know Margie Nightingale feels a lot of, feels, feels a lot of those, a lot of those calls, right? You know, it's, there's 750 car parks there and it's parked out by 7:00 AM. Now, we should be sending as many of our bus routes through that to use the capacity of the train, but we're not doing it. The network review obviously didn't recommend that and for the life of me, I do not know why. In, in my ward also, the, there's, we didn't lose any routes, which was good, right? But we didn't gain any either, right? Right? We didn't gain any either. So we spent all this money on metro, right? And the bus review, I don't know what that would have cost, and the bus review. And I didn't benefit at all, my ward, my residents didn't benefit at all from that. All right? The only benefit that they have received was from the Miles government with the 50 cent fares. And to be fair, the Christopher Floyd government said that they would take it to, for the, for that term, for their term. And we'll see what happens after that. But the 50 cent fares is the thing that's really driving the numbers in metro and some of the new services as well. Because if it wasn't for those 50 cent fares, your numbers that you're crowing about wouldn't exist. Yeah. And people also complain, to a lesser extent than maybe the residents of Maruka, but in my ward, about those broken trips. Right? Especially the people with mobility issues. Right? And they're the ones that we should, they're the ones that are actually using the system or the service, right? Through the day. Right? And they need good, accessible ways of, of, of getting on the bus, which we do a pretty good job of.
Councillor Strunk, your time has expired. Are there further speakers? Councillor Collier, sorry.
Thanks very much, Chair. I'll just wait for my, there we go. Chair, Brisbane, Brisbane's new bus network is something that should be working for all residents, but the feedback is overwhelming. People are frustrated, angry and confused by the LNP's terrible new bus network. On this side of the chamber, we believe in a Brisbane and a public transport network that works for all residents. But the LNP continue to cut public transport services and label it as progress. That is their legacy. They cut services at the Apollo Road ferry terminal and Milton City Cat terminal. They closed the Norman Park ferry terminal. They cut countless suburban bus services. And then they have the gall to come in here and tell concerned commuters and residents that they're small minded. Ultimately, the LNP's new bus network is based on data from years ago, prior to the introduction to 50 cent fares. And that's a game changer that's completely adapted people's public transport behaviour. And then the LNP and council have somehow managed to top it off by getting Brisbane residents the worst bus deal of the century from their LNP mates in the state. Where is that growth funding? Where are the suburban bus routes? And where are the accessible stops? They are gone under this LNP council, just not a priority, because they put all their eggs into the metro basket. The LNP always say that we need the metro because they can put on, because they can put on more suburban bus routes. But now we know with this new network that that's just another LNP lie. They can't be trusted with Brisbane's public transport network because to them it is...
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Wines.
Can I take a ruling on the use of the word lie, please?
Yeah. Thank you councillor Wines. Councillor Collier, just to remind you. Thank you.
Sorry, it's another LNP mistruth. They just can't be trusted with Brisbane's public transport network because it is just countless cuts, cuts, cuts. If the Lord Mayor was here, I would tell him, this is the people's place here in City Hall. And we are here to bring their voices, the people of Brisbane's voices, to this place. A resident wrote to me recently saying that. Council has, says that the new network and metro services will improve reliability and increase capacity to get you to where you need to go sooner and safer. Well, there's no sign of this so far. Apparently now my choice is to use a service demonstrably unreliable and typically overcrowded or use a two-seat service that can't possibly get me to my destination faster. Another resident wrote to me saying, metro services are a failure already, extremely disappointing. Another says, the bus will not stop as it's already full. More residents say, since this change, these services have gone from a 30 minute service to more than an hour service. Another says, why is it that staff and senior members at Brisbane City Council and the LNP don't want to listen to commuters who use the service daily? And take the feedback as an opportunity to correct it during the early phases of this major adjustment? I have, and then this resident goes on to say, I have also raised this issue with my local LNP councillor. However, she has not responded or advised me on any updates or outcomes in regards towards the recent changes to the BCC bus network. They can't even be bothered to explain it to the very people that they are supposed to represent. The LNP will tell you, everything is fine and dandy out there, but these stories, the stories that we have shared today and we will continue to share in this place, paint a very different picture. What this bus network shows is that the tired old LNP, after more than 20 years, have really just stopped listening.
Further speakers? Councillor Griffiths.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you for letting me speak to this topic. And it isn't going away for the LNP. This sore is not going away for the LNP. People are very bitter, very twisted out there about what's happened to their very good bus service. I'd have to say I agree with the councillor over there, councillor Crystal Adams, in saying residents can't wait for change. And they can't wait for change in Holland Park Ward. They want more services there, they want better services there, and they want to be able to talk to their councillor, not have to talk to an opposition councillor to get results. What we're seeing here today, and I know, once again, the Lord Mayor is not in the chamber, I don't know, this is his one day to be in the chamber to listen to what the community has to say? Missing in action. We have a tired, lifeless council administration at the moment. There's virtually no leadership over there. You look over to that side of the chamber, you go, who's leading? Who's actually listening to the residents? Who's actually speaking up over there? There's certainly no passion, zero passion. All I know is I feel sorry for Joan. And I'm, I congratulate you councillor Kim for speaking to her. I have lots of Joneses in my ward. And they keep coming into the ward and they're seeking timetables. They're seeking paper timetables. They're seeking assistance with getting on the buses and understanding what we're doing to the buses. We know this council spent $1.5 billion. $1.5 billion of the city's money building this metro, building the tunnels, buying the buses. They still didn't fix the biggest problem. And that's South Bank. They didn't actually, for $1.5 billion, they still stuffed that up. And we still have a problem. So, and, and then when you tell residents this, they go, so how much, 1.5 billion? And then you go, do you know what? They're giving it now to the state government. Like, how much for? How much for? Nothing. Nothing. People are just astounded when they hear what is going on with this council. And all I can tell you is, there are 14 million trips that people are worse off. I know a lady in Acacia Ridge who has to catch four buses to work. Four buses to work. Rockleigh, Archfield, Coopers Plains, Acacia Ridge, Durack, Salisbury, all have had their services cut. People now have very long walks to their bus stop, up to or over a kilometre. They also have long walks between where they hop off the bus and then get to the hospital, a kilometre. Who, which sort of people think that's good? And I say that for our staff too. How did our staff ever think that that sort of scenario was good? You know, residents are telling me that when they do get to the metro, the buses are full and driving past them. They're angry, they're annoyed. I've got a bus stop on Ipswich Road at Maruka that we've been waiting 18 months for it to get a shelter. 18 months. And it's right next door. It's right next door to the railway station. And can I get action out of this council? All I get is a whole lot of paper and a whole lot of excuses, a wall, almost a wall of paper with nothing happening. This is like, this is the opposite of where we started when it got into power, when Candu Campbell came in and goes, we're going to make this place happen. I have to say, did. Now we've got the do nothing council. Pretend that everything's fine. You know, outside, and I've spoken about this numerous times, outside the biggest hospital in the, on the south side, one of the biggest hospitals in PA, it is so dimly lit. And I've raised this and raised this and raised this. And I continue to go past that site and see people sitting amongst rubbish and trolleys, but in a dimly lit bus stop. And you think, this is the standard, our council, even our staff frankly, because our staff are listening to this, supporting the administration, seem to think that that's okay. Oh, that's okay, we'll just, we'll let them sit there because it doesn't affect us because our executives drive home.
Councillor Griffiths, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers?
This is appalling.
Are there any further speakers? Councillor Wines, your right of reply.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Look, let me just make a few comments generally. As I predicted, the opposition would use a series of sad and tired cliches in an attempt to criticise this administration. They did that. Can I also say this? If there are any individuals who have reached out to any councillor with a sincere and genuinely held concern about these bus changes, please forward them to me. I would like to see who they are, understand their complaint and see what rectification can be done. I think though, that saying, making nebulous statements, people and generalities, which were largely what Labour councillors here were doing about the circumstances of individuals, I don't believe assists those individuals. I would like to know the detail of their concern, so if it can be, it can be responded to properly. My comments about Joan from Holland Park were not an attack on Joan from Holland Park, but rather the exploitation of poor Joan by councillor Kim. Had councillor Kim dealt with her genuinely, she would have been able to have the vast bulk of her concerns responded to fairly and correctly. And, and as councillor Adams responds...
Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Sorry, Chair, I think you got the wrong councillor. Thank you. It's a claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim.
I look forward to councillor Kim not, not claiming, using her misrepresentation time appropriately and doing another speech at the conclusion of my presentation. But as you know, councillor Kim routinely and cynically exploits rules in the same way she routinely and cynically exploits people like poor old Joan. Who, I think, if I had a chance to discuss these concerns with her in the way that councillor Adams has discussed with her at length, would be able to address her concerns. One of my favourite criticisms was that apparently I spend all day on social media. And then councillor Cassidy proceeded to read comments from the Lord Mayor's Facebook page. And so I would respectfully submit that councillor Cassidy should get off social media. I actually am pretty sure councillor Cassidy works in this building, Monday to Friday, nine to five. I'm not sure he knows where Deegan Ward is anymore. And I would strongly recommend to him, get off the Lord Mayor's social media and get out into the community where the people are. I spend a great deal of time in my ward and I know what the concerns are. And I know what occurs on my social media page. But, and also can I say, I don't like people like Joan being exploited by the Labour Party for their gain. I don't like it when the Labour Party manipulates numbers to suit their argument and ignores numbers that do not suit them, which is what routinely happens. And I think that just cherry picking comments on the Lord Mayor's social media page and then say, and then repeating them here, does not amount to an argument, does not amount to substance, and does not amount to any meaningful effort by a person who takes extra pay to sit in that chair. And then to have the temerity to criticise me for understanding the line of criticism that he and his colleagues propose, and then finding out moments later, all he does is live on social media, is pretty sad really by him. But really, very much in character. Now, as I say, consultation and engagement sat very much at the heart of the efforts that we put forward to ensure that the implementation of what is a significant change, which for many people does involve two-seat journeys. But that is because it's about a more reliable, better on time running, more predictable timetables and a capacity for growth that did not exist before and would not exist had we not responded and prepared for the future. It's, it's again, we're talking about a very, an idea that always sits at the heart of this administration's LNP team. That is that we are getting on with the job, we're planning for the future and we're building a better city. And we're doing that deliberately through a series of public transport upgrades, through a series of tunnel improvements, plus also a capacity to take back the street from heavy vehicles, which this also allows us to do. But as I say, communication sat at the heart of what we said. There were more than 800 key stakeholders, including major employers, local businesses and community leaders consulted to ensure we had the correct network alignments. We engaged with 27 accessibility sector organisations to better understand the needs, among, among which was Queensland's disability peak bodies. There were more than 350 schools, received briefings, assisting parents, students and educators understand the changes that were coming. There were workshops organised, there was on-ground teams to more than 1,400 support shifts proactively assisting more than 18,000 customers both before and after the launch.
Councillor Wines, your time has expired. Councillor Kim, just your point of misrepresentation, please.
Thank you. My point of misrepresentation focuses on the definition of exploitation of a resident who actually willingly came to our opposition councillors, reached out to us directly due to the fact that she was unhappy with the response from her local councillor, LNP councillor.
One moment, please councillors. Councillor Wines and councillor Cassidy, please do not... Councillor Cassidy. Your own councillor is on her feet trying to speak. Councillor Kim.
Thank you. If a local resident comes to an opposition councillor because they're unhappy with their LNP incumbent councillor's response to them, that's not exploitation. That's actually advocacy on behalf of an actual resident. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillors, thank you councillor Kim. We will now put this to the vote. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors. Councillor Marks, Infrastructure Committee.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting held on Tuesday, the 12th of August 2025, be adopted.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Marks and seconded by councillor Wong that the report of the Infrastructure Committee meeting dated Tuesday, 12th of August 2025, be adopted. Councillor Marks.
Point of order.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Yes, could I ask that item B and D are taken seriatum for voting purposes, please?
Mm-hmm. B and D for voting. Councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. And it's great to be giving the Infrastructure Committee report. Last week, we had a fantastic presentation on council's Black Spot Programme. We heard from Tom Peters, one of council's most respected and professional officers, who's always across the detail. Each year, the Australian Government provides $150 million nationwide for the Black Spot Programme. Council works with the federal government to upgrade intersections to improve road safety. This conclude a range of minor treatments such as line marking, signal phasing changes through to major upgrades such as new traffic signals. The 2025 Black Spot Programme will see construction work at six major intersections. Gibbs Street and Barry Parade in the Valley, James Street and Doggett Street in the Valley, St Paul's Terrace and Quarry Street in Spring Hill, Tilly Road and Grassdale Road in Gumdale, Kestles Road and Orange Grove Road in Salisbury and Winham Road and Beverley Street at Morningside. The Black Spot Programme is crucial in making Brisbane's roads safer and I thank the federal government for their support. We're looking forward to delivering these upgrades. We have also had three petitions before the committee, all of which were passed. Firstly, we had a petition containing 113 signatures requesting that council implement dedicated bus lanes on Ipswich Road between Wollongaba and Maruka railway stations. Ipswich Road is classified as an arterial road under Brisbane's, council's Brisbane City Plan 2014 road hierarchy. Arterial roads connect major centres across Brisbane and play a critical role in supporting the city's public transport and freight networks. Through the Brisbane Clearway Action Plan and AI transport management projects, council will consider introducing transit lanes when Ipswich Road corridor is formally assessed. These investigations will be prioritised alongside other transport initiatives across the city and will be subject to the availability of funding. Next, we had a petition requesting improvements to Orange Grove Road between Musgrove and Boundary Roads, Coopers Plains. That petition contained 60 signatures. That petition contained 60 signatures. It requested a reduction in the speed limit on Orange Grove Road, a new refuge island and changes to parking. Under the state government's manual, a 60 kilometre speed limit is generally appropriate for arterial roads in urban areas. Lower speed limits on arterial roads are usually only considered where there is a high level of pedestrian activity generated by nearby land users such as schools, hospitals or shopping precincts. Council has previously assessed a section of Orange Grove Road and introduced a school zone. Council considers the current speed limit to be appropriate and does not support a speed limit review at this time. Likewise with the refuge island, there is an existing refuge island nearby and there's been no crash issues with the front end parking arrangements. Finally, there were two petitions requesting council install a scramble crossing at the intersection of Sherwood and Oxy Roads. They had a total of 418 signatures. Council supports making pedestrian crossings safer and more efficient. However, in this case, a scramble crossing wouldn't help improve this intersection. Traffic modelling indicates that introducing a scramble crossing would severely reduce the efficiency of the intersection. It would lead to increased delays for all road users, including pedestrians, as cycle times would need to increase to support the new scramble phase. Alongside pedestrian delays, a scramble crossing would further contribute to increased vehicle queuing, negatively affecting the operation of the surrounding road network. For these reasons, council does not support implementing a scramble crossing at this intersection. The concerns raised by petitioners regarding pedestrian safety at this intersection have been noted. The intersection currently includes signalised pedestrian crossings on all legs, including the slip lane from Sherwood Road into Oxford, Oxley Road. Each crossing is equipped with pedestrian countdown timers that display the time remaining to complete the crossing. The timing of the pedestrian signals have been reviewed and found to comply with all relevant Australian guidelines. As a result, no changes to the pedestrian crossing times are proposed at this stage. That concludes the petitions for the second Infrastructure Committee, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Further speakers? Councillor Johnston.
Thank you. Yes, I rise to speak on items uh B and uh D. Firstly, just briefly with respect to item B, um it is an appalling situation when a petition that relates to three councillors' wards, uh they're not consulted on. Um this was a, an issue I raised in the committee meeting um last week, uh but uh bus lanes on Ipswich Road affect three councillors, um councillor Griffiths, myself and councillor Massey. Um it would have been very easy for council to consult us uh on this petition and seek our views. Um sadly, this is not the first time that councillor, council has not consulted with me on Ipswich Road petitions and I've been assured by the former CEO that I would be consulted in future. So I now know that council will lie um when it comes to making sure councillors are consulted about.
Point of order Madam Chair. Point of order councillor.
That is an inappropriate contact and I ask you to make councillor Johnson withdraw that comment.
If you can withdraw lie, please.
Point of order Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Adams.
I understood we weren't allowed to say lie in the chambers, let alone accuse council officers.
I'm waiting for the councillor to withdraw and change her language.
So Madam Chair, I have reviewed your comments um extensively about this issue and you have told councillor Adam that the words lie is okay. You've been very clear.
No councillor.
You have been very clear Madam Chairman, that you cannot use the word liar, um but you can use the word lie.
I did not just give you an instruction for you to debate what I have asked you to do and it has been very clearly stated in this chamber time and time again. And during the meeting today, every other councillor has realised and changed their language. All I'm doing is not asking for a debate, but asking you to use another word.
Well, Madam Chairman, because you have um allowed councillor Adams and other councillors, including myself, councillor Cassidy and other LNP councillors to use the word lie, um I am not sure why you are asking me to do something that you have allowed repeatedly in this place now. So this is, this is a very significant issue, Madam Chair, because of your inconsistent rulings.
Councillor, thank you.
So are you do- are you directing me to not use the word lie?
Councillor, I have given you a request and when I've requested of other councillors during this meeting, they've complied. And if you cannot comply, then I will have to formally warn you.
Madam Chairman, um I will not be withdrawing the word lie because you have specifically and clearly stated in this place through multiple rulings that the word lie is an acceptable word to use. So.
One moment councillor Johnston. As you continue to fail with the request to take that remedial action for your unsuitable meeting conduct, in accordance with section 21.8 of the meeting's local law, 2001, I hereby make an order reprimanding you for your conduct and your conduct and this reprimand will be noted in the minutes of this meeting.
Point of order Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Not only have I not been cautioned, I have not been warned and you have gone straight to noting me in the minutes for doing something that you have repeatedly stated in this chamber is perfectly acceptable. This is your ruling.
Councillor Johnston, I have made my ruling and if you.
I move dissent in your ruling.
Seconded.
Councillor Johnston, dissent in my ruling has been moved by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Griffiths. All those in favour, say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The noes have it.
Division.
Seconded.
Division called by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Griffiths. Councillors, ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being eight in favour and 15 against.
That is lost councillors, please resume your seats.
Councillor Collier has said the word lie today.
I haven't called you, I have not called you to speak yet councillor Johnston.
Point of order Madam Chair.
Point of order councillor Johnston.
Madam Chair, councillor Collier has used the word lie in today's meeting, which he has acknowledged to me. Why are you engaging in biased behaviour to allow some councillors to say the word and not others?
Councillor Johnston, you can look at the footage later, councillor Collier did the right thing and, and did not continue to use the word lie when she was called up. She said the word mistruth and it was clear and you can watch the video. Now, I'm not going to debate this any further, we are moving on. Are there any further speakers?
I am speaking.
Councillor Howard.
I am speaking.
Thank you Madam Chair.
I have the floor Madam Chair. Excuse me.
Councillor, are you going to speak to the report?
Of course I'm speaking to the report.
Then speak to the report.
Well, how about you let me speak to the report?
And I am warning you councillor, that is inappropriate behaviour. Speak to the report.
Well, you weren't even prepared to call me.
Councillor, do not debate me. To the report.
I'm going to move on because other councillors will speak to this issue about why opposition councillors and myself are being excluded from consultation on reports and the behaviour is appalling. I want to speak though on um safety around Sherwood State School. Um the, the um petition response to Sherwood State School families, over 400 people who've signed these petitions online and in person, um demonstrates very clearly um that this administration is not interested in pedestrian safety. The report itself does a number of things, including um only addressing car issues and impact on cars. It does not include pedestrian counts, it does not include an accident history, it does not include any consultation with the school, which I have done, which this council has not done. It demonstrates that this administration is only prepared to be car centric and the safety of families and students at our schools on busy roads is being put at risk by this LNP administration's failure to take pro pedestrian um improvements. Now, the West End State School has a very effective and functioning scatter crossing um across two very busy roads in West End. It is the model with which this can be done. In the time that this petition has been in, there have been three accidents, two of them major, in, in which have caused significant damage to safety fencing, which has been knocked down, traffic lights which were completely knocked over and just last week, the traffic lights have been hit again. And this is being done not only by trucks who can't turn the corner properly, but by Brisbane City Council buses. Now, the safety issues here are serious, council's response to this petition is inadequate and inappropriate and the safety of pedestrians and our school students should be council's highest priority, not inaction by the LNP council.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Just before we go further, can I clarify councillor Johnston, is it B and D together for the vote or B separately and D separately for voting that you want? Thank you, we'll do B and D se- thank you, uh thank you councillor Chong Hua. B and D will be separate. Councillor Howard.
Well, thank you Madam Chair. I rise to speak to item A and to touch on local black spot projects in my ward. Some of Brisbane's busiest and most dangerous intersections will finally see long awaited upgrades with the new state government backing critical local road safety infrastructure, including much needed improvements at Gips Street and St Paul's Terrace, St Paul's Terrace Quarry Street and James Street, Doggett Street and Robertson Street. Now, under the previous state government, six out of eight Brisbane black spot upgrade proposals were blocked before reaching the federal government for funding consideration, despite meeting the federal road safety programme's funding criteria. Those rejections meant Brisbane missed out on vital investment to improve safety at key intersections in Spring Hill, Fortitude Valley, Bowen Hills, Morningside and Salisbury, all of which recorded a total of 53 crashes over five years. When politicians stand united with the Lord Mayor, who share the same values and vision, it strengthens our city's voice in the fight for funding. We've worked with the new state government and they have signalled a stronger commitment to road safety and infrastructure in the inner city, unlocking the potential for projects like these high risk intersections to finally proceed. Funding for these projects is administered by the federal government but relies on endorsement by the state. Under the previous government's approach, Brisbane received just 6% of Queensland's total black spot funding compared to 34% allocated to places such as Logan. That imbalance left inner urban residents waiting longer for safety upgrades in high risk, high traffic areas. 2025 marks a positive shift in cooperation between levels of government and opens the door for Central Ward to receive a fairer share of the record $150 million committed nationally to black spot safety upgrades. Um Madam Chair, through you, um presentations such as were delivered in the Infrastructure Committee are so important for councillors to understand how black spot programmes work and the importance of local councillors making sure that they're advocating for residents within their areas. And so I really like to congratulate the committee and particularly councillor Parry for bringing this presentation and I know that the committee members would have appreciated the information that was provided and I'm delighted of course to speak today about the um the impacts that that has on my ward. Uh because as many of you know, uh the inner city sometimes cops a bit of a hiding from those on the other side. They seem to think that everything should happen outside in the suburbs. Well, you know, it's really, it's really important that we have a look at those particular sites that were, that have now been given the funding. And as I said, that's Gips Street and St Paul's Terrace, St Paul's Terrace Quarry Street and James Street, Doggett Street and Robertson Street. Now, the James Street, Doggett Street and Robertson Street is a really interesting one because I spent a lot of time talking to my residents about what we could do about this and I've been a councillor near, here now for about 13 years and so um many times over that time. And in fact, in the previous councillor's time, councillor Hinchcliffe, who was raised earlier in the, in the, the meeting um by those on the other side, um did his very best to do something about that intersection but of course failed. And uh over the time, there had been many, many, many suggestions of what should be done. Um I did a, a, a large amount of consultation and it was only with the support of Trevor Evans that we were able to um put our case forward uh to the federal government because as I said, the previous state government um ignored it completely, even though this was one of the most busiest intersections that we have. And so um I was delighted to stand at that intersection with Trevor Evans during the last federal election and, and can I, can I pay credit to him for his continual um support of local residents, even though unfortunately he didn't get elected. Um I am sure that his um, his lobbying certainly uh paid some dividends and of course, we are very, very delighted to know that thanks to the new state government, uh the particular black spot um funding for Central Ward will now be, be going through. So we look forward to working closely with the new state government to ensure Brisbane's most dangerous intersections receive the safety improvements they urgently need because they help us create vibrant inner neighbourhoods where people want to live, work and invest.
Further speakers, councillor Strong.
Uh yes, thank you Chair. Listen, it was a very interesting presentation and, but before I start, can I ask that item uh, that item C be taken seriatum for voting purposes?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um I was the, I was the beneficiary of um, uh one of the beneficiaries of the presentation in regards to a black spot program um in, in my ward and that's Pyne, Azalea and Archerfield Road. An intersection that has been listed, well, it was first listed as a black spot back in 2015. And it's continually gotten worse and worse and worse, uh that intersection because of the development that was actually happening in and around that intersection. Um so much so, in the last five years, there was 37 reportable uh accidents uh and in that intersection, which was far and above any other intersection probably in a black spot programme, probably for years, right? Um I, you know, you hear about black spot programmes for intersections that have seven or eight uh crashes, reportable crashes and uh, and that's not good either, you know, and they should be looked at for black spot funding. But uh you know, 37 in the last five years is just phenomenal. So it was really good to see uh that, that it, that it has been submitted, hasn't been approved by the federal government at this stage for the three million, but uh the uh Lord Mayor has uh committed to funding it uh through Brisbane City Council uh funds if the black spot programme isn't successful for that particular intersection. Um I just, uh now, there's been a, of course, there was a very large petition for this intersection that was lodged a couple of weeks ago, um on behalf of um the head petitioner, Margie Nightingale, the state member for Inala, uh who has done a lot of work in this area as well. Uh first Milton did a, a lot of advocacy and then myself since from 2016 and now Margie Nightingale for this black spot problem, right? And uh, and she's turning out to be a fantastic advocate for her electorate of Inala, I've got to say. Um black spot uh was increased from two million to three million, uh thank you to the Albanese government. Uh probably hadn't had an increase uh, uh probably in the last, I don't know, 10 years, there hadn't probably been an increase much, uh but they, they saw obviously, I mean- hadn't probably been an increase much, but they, they saw obviously, I mean, the price of the materials and, and all that has gone up in that time, and of course, it needed to probably be raised to $3 million. Just because, and, and that's the cap that they put on it, but of course, council and other entities can put their own money in if they want to increase or, or do the, do the upgrade, but $3 million only comes from the federal government. Now, it was, it was a hot potato, it was a hot potato in, in the, in the last election, of course, as I said, Margie Nightingale really grabbed a hold of it and really pursued the Lord Mayor about this intersection. But I was a little bit confused when the budget flyer came out from the Lord Mayor a couple of weeks ago into my ward, where it said, this particular intersection, said, with the concept and design completed, funding for the upgrade of the intersection will, will be, has been allocated in this budget. And I'm thinking, what's going on there? Because I was told in a briefing, we were told here in the chamber, that the, that the funding isn't in this budget for the, for the upgrade of the, of the intersection, the lights, the lights upgrade, it's going to be in the next year's budget, and won't be completed until early 2027. So, I'm a little bit confused, and maybe the acting, acting chair can take this on board and say, why is it, why are we being told one thing and the Lord Mayor comes out and says this to the public, you know, to probably over 20,000 homes, right, that this went out to in, by Australia Post, at probably a cost of about $25,000, right? Why is it being said one thing and we're being told another as well? So, with those, with those few comments, I'll close my remarks, thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Massey.
Thanks Chair. I rise to speak briefly on item B. And I rise to speak on this, because it is important to note a couple of things on the record. The first one, of course, being, and I, and I reiterate through you Chair, councillor Johnston's comments. This road, Ipswich Road, goes through three wards. It is clear from this petition that it is talking about the Woolongabba Bus Station and the future Cross River Rail Site, all the way from the Gabba Ward into Tennyson Ward and then into Maruka Ward, into councillor, through you again Chair, councillor Griffiths Ward. And it is startling that not a single one of those councillors was consulted.
Startling, yes.
Like startling, since the petition does involve our three wards. And, and it's, and you know, and you can kind of see this, like, you know, when the petition contains 113 signatures, 112 are from Brisbane residents. And they're called Brisbane residents, because it's clear that the wards that they live in hasn't been highlighted. And I undeniably believe, and I'll look, I'll, I'll, I'm going to investigate this a little further, that those residents are probably all residents in the Gabba Ward, Tennyson Ward and also Maruka Ward. And so it's just really important to get that on the record. Was this a mistake? If it was a mistake that was raised at the committee last week, why wasn't it taken off the agenda? For proper consultation with the relevant councillors it affects. Because of course Ipswich Road is super important. Let's not forget the combustion, what was it called? The combustion bus city plan that was announced by the Lord Mayor during the election. I state this from an article from the 11th of March 2024. And I'm just going to state a couple of things that were a part of this plan, obviously from six, like nearly a year and 18, 18 months ago. Okay. Inner city bypass, $25 million. Has this happened? Upgrade to Hurston Road roundabout and Goldcrest Avenue. Upgrade to Gregory Towers and Bowlin Hills and the intersection. Ipswich and Bowdeshet Road, $10 million. The other thing that I'll also highlight, because this is quite specific to this petition, is the bus priority improvements. One, and of course, the promised bus jump lanes. And this is what we're actually talking about here, ways for buses, which is, as we keep hearing, two-thirds of the majority of Brisbane residents travel on buses, enabling buses to not get stuck in traffic.
Makes sense.
It makes sense. And the residents that are asking for this can be undeniably in the wards of Tennyson Ward, which wasn't consulted, the Gabba Ward, which wasn't consulted, and of course, Maruka Ward, which also wasn't consulted. This seems to me like a complete, I mean, especially since it was discussed in the committee last week, this seems like a complete mistake, but I just wanted to highlight a couple of those points. Because while there will be an investigation and it talks about Brisbane's Clearware Action Plan, at no point are we hearing about any of the promised Lord Mayor's election commitments. We haven't heard about the Ipswich Road and Bowdeshet Road, $10 million, and we certainly haven't heard anything about what priority bus improvements have been placed and where these bus jump lanes are supposed to be. And it definitely has, it definitely has been well over a year. So, I'm just going to put those on the record, because I think this is, this is, I don't think, like, this is either a great oversight, but we're, we're seeing a bit of that at the moment now, but you should be consulting local councillors for local residents raising local issues.
Councillor Griffiths.
Thanks Madam Chair, and I rise to speak on three of these items. The first one is the black spot programme. And note, this is federally funded, and I'd like to thank the federal government for giving money for this programme. It's one of the few programmes in council that I get briefed on, where they actually come out and tell you, well, this is the reason why we're putting this proposal up. They give you the stats and they give you information, where officers give you information. A rare thing in this council, seems becoming rarer. But, in relation to Orange Grove Road and Tuie Road, the officers did come and brief me about the information here, the reason why we needed that, and I do support it. I think it's good that we're given data and actually given an explanation of why a particular project is funded, rather than we'll leave it up to the Lord Mayor's lottery ticket sort of prize, which we usually get for, for projects in the ward. Second one is the Ipswich Road busway. Now, I know councillor Parry's new, and I know she's learning the, the ropes, but this was unacceptable that a petition is coming to this chamber that hadn't been consulted with, with the councillors whose wards it impacts. You don't see that often in this place, but this is really poor performance. So a big fail for that one. I would expect that if a petition's coming that impacts your ward, then you have a right to say, yes, I support it, or no, I don't support it for these reasons. But not to be asked at all is just plain right wrong, you know? So I wasn't consulted on this, neither was councillor Massey, neither was councillor Johnston, and I think it really shows the arrogance of this administration. Certainly lots of feedback I could give, I know the other councillors could give a lot of feedback as well. We need to be looking at these issues. I'm not opposed to it, but I need to understand the impacts on the community for, for this sort of infrastructure change. Now, the third thing was a, once again, this was a petition I was consulted on. It seems like sometimes you get consulted on, there's no listening, which seems to be, at the moment, some departments get better at listening and some departments get worse at listening. So here we have a section of road, Orange Grove Road, where we're doing work at one end for the Coopers Plains Crossing, we've got a school on it, we've got a shopping centre on it, it's a single lane either way, we've got a community centre, we've got lots of reasons to lower the speed, which is what they're asking for. I supported the residents in wanting to lower the speed from 60 to 50, and indeed, we have, we've done it in Corinda, done it in Maruka, we've done it in Annaly, we've done it in all these other places, where when you're going through a shopping centre, we've lowered the speed. And councillor Cooper was behind that idea, and it's worked well in those areas and made those communities safer. So I do not understand why we're keeping speed at 60k along this stretch of road, when I believe there's fair evidence for it to go to 50. Similarly, I don't think we've listened to all the residents' concerns about safe crossing points on this road. And once again, it seems to be this administration are setting the tone for the officers, and the administration is going, no, we don't give a whatever about it, and the officers are going, no, we don't give a about it either. And the listening that isn't going on to the community is really disturbing, and we are a council, we should be listening, and we should be getting better results. This would have been a really easy one to get some good results on for these residents, and I'm, I'm really embarrassed by the fact that we haven't delivered that.
No further speakers, councillor Marks, right of reply. We'll now put all the items to the vote, we'll go with... We'll now put item A to the vote, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now put item B to the vote, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Massey and seconded by councillor Chongwa, ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and 8 against.
That is carried, councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put item C to the vote, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Chongwa and seconded by, oh, sorry, councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and 8 against.
That is carried, councillors, please resume your seats. We'll now put item D to the vote, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no.
No.
The ayes have it.
Division.
Division called by councillor Cassidy and seconded by councillor Johnston, ayes to my right, noes to my left. Clarks, please read the result.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being 16 in favour and 8 against.
That is carried, councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, please resume your seats. Councillors, under the provisions of section 3513 of the meeting's local law and the expiration of the period allowed for debate for committee reports, I shall now put the motions to the meeting for the adoption of any committee report not yet voted upon without further amendment or debate. So we'll now vote on city planning, suburban renewal and economic development report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now vote on environment, parks and sustainability. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now vote on customer services committee, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now vote on community and the arts committee report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. We'll now vote on finance and city governance committee report, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Howard.
Madam Chair, I have a petition requesting that council improve the safety of the pedestrian crossing on James Street, Fortitude Valley.
Councillor Dixon.
I've received a petition that is requesting council improve safety on Kent Road, Woolon.
No further petitions, councillor Dixon may have a motion for the receipt of those petitions.
Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Thank you councillor Cassidy. It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Cassidy that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of an Office of the Independent Assessor or Councillor Ethics Committee order? We'll now move to general business, is there any general business? Councillor Dixon.
Chair, I wish to rise on two items of general business. First, I wish to publicly give a big shout out and congratulations to the Vocal Ensemble at Eagle Junction State School, who won the 2025 Creative Generational Coral Fanfare Primary State Final last Friday. So it's very exciting, they're very excited about it. So it was held at the Conservatorium Theatre, at the Queensland Conservatorium at Griffith University across the river at South Bank. Students competed against other schools across the state, including Edgehill State School, Warrigal Road State School, Benoa State School and Middle Ridge State School. Their success is a testament to their musical talent, dedication, teamwork and most importantly, love of singing. So well done Eagle Junction State School on this incredible effort. I also want to thank their very dedicated teacher, Mrs Schum, who led the Vocal Ensemble on the day and led them through three songs, This Day, Caterpillar and Perfect Day. I can't wait to hear the Vocal Ensemble soon at Eagle Junction State School, very, very soon. So before I touch on my second item of general business, I just want... I just want to thank the parents and caregivers as well, who spend an awful lot of time getting their children to choir practice and being the support crew. So Chair, now on to my second item of general business. Just wanted to also give a shout out to the local schools in the Hamilton Ward, particularly the PNCs and their volunteers who work so hard to fundraise in between their parenting and work commitments. Ascot State School had their colour run last Friday and they raised a bit, a fair bit of money for their school. They twisted my arm this year to be slimed along principal Deb Cox and a couple of other lucky, or should I say unlucky, participants. Look, I'll try anything once, so it was an unusual experience getting slimed. I was a little bit unprepared and I didn't bring a towel to drive back in my car. So Hamilton Ward residents, if you saw me walking the streets of Ascot back to my office, looking a bit different, that is why. It's also long lunch season and many schools are using the chance to raise a bit of money and connect with the community. So last weekend, it was my pleasure to sponsor the L Lady Help of Christian Long Lunch and Draw the Raffle. So congratulations to the organising committee, Alana and Claudia, as well as Katrine and others on a big effort. They made six thousand dollars alone in raffles. As a parent myself, I just want to say thank you for everything the volunteers on the PNC do. You make the time and effort to make our schools even better. So thank you, Chair. I'll end my remarks there.
Further speakers? Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Madam Chairman, I move that you are engaging in unsuitable meeting conduct by failing to apply the meeting's local law with respect to the use of inappropriate language in this place to all councillors fairly and consistently.
Seconded.
Yes, that has not been seconded. We'll now continue on. I didn't hear you. Who seconded?
I stood up to my microphone and said seconded. I did it quietly, admittedly.
Thank you, councillor Cassidy. A motion of unsuitable meeting conduct of the chair has been moved by councillor Johnston and seconded by councillor Cassidy. I'll now vacate the chair and leave the chamber.
Is there any debate for the motion? Councillor Johnston.
The behaviour of the chairperson, councillor Sandy Landers, today and over the past year with respect to the use of the word lie has been deliberately inconsistent and biased with respect to her rulings with respect to this issue. Now, I'm going to raise a few examples of this, just from today. Firstly, from today, councillor Collier used the word lie and was not cautioned, was not noted in the minutes as engaging in inappropriate conduct. The Lord Mayor has used the word lie and that was last year. He used the word lie and was not cautioned or noted in the minutes for using inappropriate conduct. Not only that, when I raised that issue in the chamber of the Lord Mayor using the word lie, I was told it was not a point of order and the Chair of Council refused to address the issue. Equally, last year councillor Collier used the word lie. She was warned and asked to change her language, which I don't believe she actually did at that point. But the best part, the best part, which demonstrates the obvious and complete bias by councillor Sandy Landers, is her treatment of councillor Adams' use of the word lie last year. With respect to that issue, councillor Adams stood up and used the word lie. She was not cautioned or noted in the minutes and was allowed to use that word. In fact, councillor Sandy Landers advised at that time that the word lie was acceptable, but the word liar or accusing someone of being a liar or lying was not acceptable. Now, that is the standard that has been upheld in this place. Over the past six months or more since that ruling now, numerous councillors, including myself, have used the word lie. Sometimes we are not cautioned or warned or it's not addressed at all. On other occasions, councillors may be asked to change the language and on some occasions councillors may be cautioned. The only person who has been put into the minutes for unsuitable conduct on two occasions for using the word lie is myself. This is deliberate bias. It is a foul abuse of power by the Chair of Council, who has explicitly allowed the Lord Mayor and councillor Adams to use the word lie with no consequences at all under the meeting's law. Instead, different treatment is meted out to myself and inconsistent treatment is meted out to ALP councillors. In addition to councillor Landers' foul abuse of power in this place, she is engaging in an abuse of the rules when it comes to management of these issues. Other councillors in this place are cautioned repeatedly before they are noted in the minutes. They might be cautioned three times. They are then warned for engaging in that behaviour. This is behaviour that, again, the Chair of Council has said is perfectly acceptable by councillor Adams, behaviour that is perfectly acceptable by the Lord Mayor for engaging in exactly the same, the perfectly acceptable by councillor Collier, by councillor Cassidy, by myself on other occasions. Today and last year, this has been determined by the Chair to be the most serious breach of conduct, where I am directly noted in the minutes without being warned. The meeting's local law says this should only happen for the worst kind of breaches of the meeting's local law. Now, using the word lie is acceptable by Adrian Schrinner, the Lord Mayor of Brisbane, councillor Krista Adams, the councillor for Holland Park. It is perfectly acceptable when they say it. It's been acceptable when councillor Cassidy has said it. It's been acceptable when councillor Collier has said it. It's been acceptable previously when I've said it. But today councillor Landers has engaged in inconsistent, biased and unfair abuse of power under the rules in this place. Now, the big problem here is she is on the record being very clear when councillor Adams said what she said last year and making it clear there is a distinction between using the word lie and liars and lying. However, that is not how it works today.
Councillor Johnston, your time has expired. Any further debate?
Yeah, thanks, Mr Deputy Chair. Look, I just rise to my contribution to this debate. Look, once again, we see this tactic employed by councillor Johnston to effect, to jam the operation of this meeting by removing councillor Landers and having to debate this one more time. Look, the role of Chair of Council is a very difficult one. It can be a very lonely one. I'm sure you have had that experience. I recall when I was Chair of Council, councillor Johnston would yell at me quite a lot. It would be something, it got to a point where I started to think she enjoyed it. She would do it so routinely. That being said, this tactic is nothing more than a tactic designed to allow councillor Johnston a platform to speak about things in a way that she perceives them, but not necessarily the way other people perceive them. So for example, when there was the, I must concede, I missed some elements of the discussion earlier today, but the only person I saw behaving in a manner inappropriate in this place was when councillor Johnston was quite aggressively, in my view, confronting the Chair of Council at a division. That, I thought, was not appropriate. The use of, people would recall when I was Chair of Council, I did attempt to lift the tone of the debate and lift the tone of language, which from time to time does drift down in this place. I've noted that councillor Landers has done the same and from time to time she will inform us that she is increasing the standard and she will enforce that standard. And that has happened on at least one, if not two, occasions. And I think she was right on both times. But to say that at the core of this resolution is a view that councillor Landers is misusing, and to use councillor Johnston's word, abusing her power, abusing, that's the sort of language and that there's some sort of targeting because of councillor Landers not strictly and harshly enforcing, you know, cracking down on one particular word, I don't accept, I don't agree with. And anyone who'd know councillor Landers knows that's not true, nor would it be something she'd do. But the idea that perhaps councillor Landers should be tougher on these things or more lenient on these things, in my view, gets nowhere near to the sort of language that councillor Johnston uses, which is abuse of power, abuse of position. That's wrong, that's not right. And that's not right. I don't think any person sincerely believes that councillor Landers does do any of those things when she is in this place. So, look, I think...
Councillor Johnston. Councillor Johnston, please, Tom, shout over the chamber. Councillor Wise.
Once again, councillor Johnston cherry picks information in an attempt to ford an argument that she's some sort of victim. I don't accept that she's a victim. No one in this room is a victim, all right? So I believe that councillor Landers is in a very difficult position. I think that she does a very good job and I think that people like councillor Johnston and others challenge her deliberately in an attempt to create these scenarios, whether justified or not. And I think so much of this is unfair, wrong and a time wasting tactic. And for those reasons, I move that it's now be put.
Seconded.
It's been moved by councillor Wise, seconded by councillor Dixon. That the motion to be put. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no?
No.
The ayes have it.
Yep, division.
Division.
Division called by councillor Griffith, seconded by councillor Chongwa. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being fifteen in favour and seven against.
The motion has been carried. So councillor Johnston, your right of reply.
Thank you, Mr Deputy Chair. I'm going to put on the record councillor Wise's own behaviour from the twelfth of November twenty-twenty-four. He was speaking about the Greens. He said, and I quote, "They are starting to see through the lies about Mount Coother that he and his associates tell." The Chair did not take any action against councillor Wise for using the word lies. That's within the past year. Here is the acting mayor, who I presume is councillor Fiona Cunningham, who used this statement. This is also on the twelfth of the eleventh twenty-twenty-four. So in this amendment, we are proposing to write them and seek to their advice on this project. Lies and deceptions are extremely upsetting for local residents. In that case, the Chair stated that the acting mayor was using the phrase in the same way that councillor Cassidy had earlier and the rule is you cannot call someone a liar directly to their face. That is what councillor Landers said last year when the deputy mayor sitting here today used the word lies. The Chair stated that the acting mayor was using it in the same way as councillor Cassidy earlier and that the rule is you cannot call someone a liar directly to their face. Every single LNP councillor, including councillor Adams, councillor Cunningham, councillor Wise and others, because I have the whole list, has used this word in this place and they have not had any action taken against them. Instead, I have had the most serious action that you can have taken against you under the meeting's local law, taken against me for doing exactly the same thing that councillor Collier has done today, that councillor Wise, who has stood up in here hypocritically saying this is not, you know, it's all about me, I'm the problem. He is doing this, councillor Cunningham is doing this, councillor Adams is doing this and the person running a protection racket for them is councillor Sandy Landers, who is clearly engaging in an abuse of her power by applying the rules in one way to me and in another way to LNP councillors and another way to Labour councillors. The record is clear, in her own words. This is on the twelfth of November twenty-twenty-four. And this is after councillor Cunningham, the acting mayor, stood up and used the word lies and deceptions. The Chair stated that the acting mayor was using it in the same way as councillor Cassidy and the rule is you cannot call someone a liar directly to their face. Now, this is the rule that was applied. Now, today, the rule is different and I have now been accused of breaching a rule that apparently does not apply to LNP councillors or ALP councillors. This is an abuse of power. It is clearly unsuitable meeting conduct and it is the second time councillor Landers has done this to me in the past year. And this is with no cautions, no warnings and this is in direct contravention of her own rule and her own statement from the twelfth of November twenty-twenty-four. That is an abuse of power, that is unsuitable meeting conduct and all councillors should be aware that councillor Landers is engaging in this conduct. It is inappropriate, it is unsuitable meeting conduct to act in a biased way and apply the rules in one way to certain councillors and in another way to other councillors, specifically where she has publicly stated what the rule is, and I again repeat. This is after councillor Cunningham used the word lies and deception. And this is what the Chair, councillor Sandy Landers, said on the twelfth of November twenty-twenty-four. The Chair stated the acting mayor was using it in the same way as councillor Cassidy earlier and that the rule is you cannot call someone a liar directly to their face. That is the same rule she has repeatedly stated in this place and she has allowed the word lies to be used repeatedly over the last few months by multiple councillors and it is now apparently not okay and there is no warning, no caution, just noting in the minutes. And we know what councillor Landers does, is use these notings in the minutes to then make formal misconduct complaints against councillors because that is what she has done in the past to me through her own bad faith actions. It shouldn't be allowed, it is unsuitable meeting conduct.
Point of order, madam, Mr Chair.
Yes, a point of...
Claim to be misrepresented. I actually wasn't even in that role.
Okay.
Check your calendar, councillor Johnston.
Well, I will now put the motion. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
Those against say no?
No.
The ayes have it.
Division. Division.
Division called by councillor Johnston, seconded by councillor Massey. Ayes to my right, noes to my left. Please ring the bell. Clerk, please read the result.
Mr Deputy Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being eight in favour and fifteen against.
The motion is lost. Could the Chair be advised that she may return to the chamber? Yep, Madam Chair, council has decided that you have not engaged in unsuitable meeting conduct. Please return to your chair.
Point of order, Mr Deputy Chair. Point of order.
Point of order, councillor Johnston.
Yes, just to be clear, I've just been advised the acting mayor was councillor Adams at that time last year, not councillor Cunningham, I apologise, and it makes it even worse that it's councillor Adams, who was the acting mayor who used the word "lies", because she's the one that's accused me today.
Are there any further speakers for general business? Councillor Massey.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on three items. One, the Justice for Palestine march this Sunday. Two, Western State School 150-year Fiesta. And then three, I'm just going to speak to the motion that happened just then, I'm hoping that I have time. I'm going to start with the fact that it seems that lots of LNP councillors can't say the word Palestine and can't say the word Gaza, and I thought for a little while that maybe I would go on that and why there's a hesitation. But actually, I've changed my mind, and what I'm going to speak to right now is the effects of malnutrition. In the short term, weeks and months, weight loss, muscle loss, weakness and fatigue, weak in immunity, slow wound healing, changes in the skin, hair, and nails. Then after that, what we have is organ and system damage, the digestive system, intestine shrink, stomach acid reduces leading to diarrhoea and other poor absorption, the heart is weakened as a muscle, liver and kidneys are impaired, their ability to filter and process toxins, lungs are weakened, brain and nerve impacts, a cognitive decline, difficulty in concentrating, memory problems, children receive delayed brain development, lower IQ, poorer performance, but there are no schools in Gaza anymore. Bone and growth effects, stunted growth in children, height and development falls behind peers, brittle bones with a lack of calcium and vitamin D increases, fracture risk, dental issues, gums and teeth weaken. And of course, the long-term consequences, now that we are nearly at two years, chronic illness risk, infertility, and a cycle of illness. Malnutrition of a population, there is no recovery, these are issues that happen that change people's biology. And what is incredible is that this LNP council will not say the word Palestine, and will not even say the word Gaza, instead saying the Middle East. Shame, absolute shame. Two, actually, no, I'm going to go on a little bit more, because what we're talking about here for this march, which is joining a national worldwide that is asking for the end of the genocide and the starvation and the entry of food to a malnourished population, is not radical. It's actually humane, and history will remember which side that we stand on on this, and I actually offer each and every Liberal councillor the chance to attend these protests. There has been no incidents at any of these protests in Brisbane. You still have the time to be on the right side of humanity. Attend, join the chorus of people that are asking for the end of starvation of a population. Two, look, West End, it's kind of hard to speak about West End, but West End did have an amazing Fiesta this weekend, and it was a wonderful day, I want to thank the PNC, I want to thank all the volunteers, everyone that attended, it was a pretty amazing day. And I'll just highlight that on that day, so many people came up to me and thanked me for my support of the Palestinian cause that day, more than I've experienced in a while, actually. And then lastly, I just want to talk about what happened here. There, we are on the record, we can't gaslight each other and say it's not happening. It is undeniable that there was no caution, there was no warning, and it went to extreme noting. I just want to recognise, in this chamber, while I've been here, the two and a bit years, I've heard councillors call each other grubs, I've heard councillors call, through you, Chair, the opposition leader, Jared Cassidy, a groin rub, and yet none of that is, none of that was noted in the minutes, none of that. This was noted in the minutes, and that's gaslighting, and it is not equitable.
Your time has expired. Are there any further items of general business? Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on two items. Firstly, my recent LGAQ policy executive trip to Longreach and Winton, and the Gemash Tami celebration at the Harley Krishna Temple in Burbank. Last week, I joined our fellow LGAQ policy executive members for a meeting in Longreach. The journey itself was an experience, over three hours from Brisbane, with a stop in Bacalhoun, and a flight with propellers, which I haven't taken in years. Upon landing, we travelled two hours by bus to Winton, a small town of about 1,200 residents. Madam Chair, I believe that's your hometown, was it? Yes, so, well, in Winton, where Telstra was often the only network, and even that disappeared from time to time, but Winton's community spirit was strong. We met with Mayor councillor Cathy White, who shared their key challenges, and one of the most important challenges is to securing $700,000 to fund a childcare centre to support working families. And in contrast, Longreach, with 3,800 residents, feel like a regional hub. We had dinner with Mayor councillor Tony Rayner and his councillors at the Quintus Museum, where the mayor outlined his vision for boosting tourism, especially during the winter month. I don't think people appreciate go to somewhere holiday when it is 44 degrees on average. The highlight was the policy executive meeting itself, held at the Longreach Civic Centre, which is their version of City Hall, so there was council chamber and a school hall-like building, but it was quite pleasant. The meeting provides a platform for councils across Queensland to share challenges and ideas. After hearing many of those challenges, I must say, thank God we're in Brisbane. And on a different note, Madam Chair, I'd like to congratulate the Harley Krishna Temple in Burbank for another successful Gemash Tami celebration, marking the birth of Lord Krishna, symbolising devotion, righteousness, love, and the triumph of good over evil. This year's event was significantly larger than last year, attendance seemed to have tripled. After the formal ceremony, I joined the organizer for dinner and tried a sweet rice dish that caught my attention. When I asked about it, one of the organizers, Chitend Gandhi, smiled and said, "It was made with love, minus the cholesterol." And he then said, "Well, we all believe in God in some form, and this food brings you to God quicker." Well, I appreciate the humour. That moment captured the joy and spirit of the celebration, faith, community, and a touch of humour, and I recommend that to the chamber. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Further speakers to general business. Councillor Howard.
Oh, thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I rise to speak on three items. India Day Fair, Tongan Language Week, and also more to see and do in Brisbane. So, over the weekend, I had the privilege of attending the India Day Fair at Roma Street Parklands, along with many of our other councillors in this chamber, an event that brought together thousands of people to celebrate India's Independence Day and the vibrant Indian-Australian community here in Brisbane. From the flag-raising ceremony to the dazzling cultural performances, India Day Fair showcased the richness of Indian traditions and the strength of our multicultural city. This Shriner Council is incredibly proud to support events like this through our suburban community and multicultural festival funding programme. We know how important it is to create spaces where communities can come together, share their stories, and feel seen and celebrated. And a special thank you to Usha Chandra and the team at Gopio Queensland for their tireless work in making this event such a success. Their leadership continues to strengthen the bonds between cultures and generations across Brisbane. It was a joy to attend and connect with so many families, performers, and volunteers, and the energy was infectious, the pride was palpable, and the message was clear, Brisbane is a city where diversity is embraced and celebrated. The Indian community is one of the most dynamic and generous in our city through culture, business, education, and community leadership. You've helped shape a more vibrant, inclusive, and forward-looking Brisbane. Your contribution is not only valued, but deeply, deeply appreciated. To everyone who took part in India Day Fair 2025, thank you for your warmth, your generosity, and your commitment to community. Madam Chair, moving to our wonderful Tongan Language Week, so I'm going to try and say this, I don't know that I will do it as well as my colleagues did it earlier, but Malolale, I think that I do it okay, guys?
It's close.
Close, okay. Chair, our multicultural community gives so much to the city, it's the heart of who we are and what makes Brisbane such a welcoming, vibrant place to live. This week also happens to be Tongan Language Week, a special time to honor the rich heritage, values, and contributions of Brisbane's Tongan community. Language is more than words, it's a living expression of identity, history, and belonging. For our Tongan residents, it's a connection to family, faith, and tradition that spans generations and oceans. In Brisbane, we are fortunate to have a strong and growing Tongan community, their presence is felt in our schools, churches, businesses, and cultural events. They bring warmth, generosity, and resilience to our city. As a council, we are proud to stand alongside our Tongan residents in celebrating their language and culture. We're proud to support a Brisbane where everyone's culture and story is respected and welcomed. So to our amazing Tongan community, thank you for sharing your stories, your traditions, and your spirit with our city. Brisbane is better because of you. And now, Madam Chair, to my third item, more to see and do in Brisbane. Now, many of you will be very sad that we don't always get to my committee report, because you used to love hearing what was happening in and around the city. So I'm going to share with you today just some of the things that have been happening, because I know many of you have been to many, many other things that I'm not going to mention. But first of all, I can't go without mentioning the ECHA. I think everyone here has been to the ECHA, and what a great event it was this year, and so fantastic that the numbers were up for the wonderful organizing committee. You've already heard me talk about the launch of the Brisbane Writers' Festival, and I'll hope to talk to you in this chamber more about that, because truly, they are just the most amazing people, and the work that they're doing is fantastic. Last Friday night, I was privileged to attend the Brisbane Girls' Grammar Gala concert, Prouds and Coda. Now, it is just amazing to me that this school can produce so much talent, and for it to be, the event actually has to be held at the Concert Hall, because nowhere else can contain them, so it's absolutely fantastic to attend that the other night. The QUT Dragon Boat Regatta happened again this year, the fourth time, in New Farm Park, they've been running for many, many years, but this year, again, it was held in New Farm Park, because that's a great opportunity. And then I must talk to you about Stories in Stone for the Cemetery Heritage and History Conference 2025. Again, fantastic group of people who helped look after our historical cemeteries, and it was fantastic to talk to them. Diverse Voices fundraiser was on, and of course, that's not just a volunteer phone service, but a lifeline-
Councillor Howard, your time has expired. Further speakers to general business.
Madam Chair.
Councillor Adams.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I rise to speak about a very important day on the calendar, probably worldwide, and that is Ukrainian Independence Day, which is actually this Sunday, and we heard from the Lord Mayor earlier this evening that we have got the blue and gold up on the Story Bridge this weekend for Sunday, the 24th of August is Independence Day. But I am the very proud local councillor of a very strong Ukrainian community centre in the midst of Holland Park, it's very tucked away in what used to be a bowls club, a long-term bowls club, a women's-only bowls club, actually, but they did go the way that some of our bowls clubs have gone in recent years, councillor Howard. They've now amalgamated with another local club, and this bowls club is now the home for the Ukrainian Community Centre as well. They've been there now since just before Covid, and they really are thriving in a place where they have their own centre, their own room, they've got a restaurant there on Friday and Saturday night, and I thoroughly recommend people if you want to try some original Kievs, of course, that's where they come from, and their dumplings, they're absolutely spectacular. But I think it is very important for us to recognise that Independence Day means a lot to the Ukrainian people with everything we're seeing in the news over the last, well, just a couple of nights even, let alone the last couple of years as well. Couple, two months ago, I had the great pleasure of being at the community with Jonathan Kraus MP representing the Premier, for a fundraising night around the International Action Alliance, which was launched at the Ukrainian Club Brisbane, and it was a fundraising dinner, which actually raised more than 35,000 to support demining operations and recovery efforts in Ukraine, because what you forget is that the Russians have planted a lot of mines in their fields and around their open spaces, and they will be, they said it would take 700 years to do it without mechanical intelligence, it's going to take a long time to demilitarise these zones. So, the courage of the Ukrainian people to be fundraising for this while they're also thinking about their families that are facing this day in, day out, is absolutely inspiring. And I hope that whatever leaders can get there to do some good, to make this stop, would be fantastic. But another very important part of the Ukrainian Independence Day is, of course, the Ukrainian Festival that happens this Saturday as well at Goalsworthy Street in Holland Park. The weather at the moment says it's going to hold out, not be too wet, but it is always a fantastic opportunity for you to come and share, the food, the beer, can strongly recommend as well, and the beautiful cultural clothes and dancing that this community holds so dear, even when they're so far away from their home country as well. I was very, very blessed at the Lord Mayor's multicultural awards night last year in City Hall, that the local Ukrainian ladies actually created a vinok for me, which is their beautiful floral headgear, and I got to wear that as the host of the ball that night, and it was absolutely gorgeous, I still have it there, it might be a bit big for a race day, but one day I'll be able to wear it again. But they are just the most lovely people, and what they have gone through, we now have heading up towards 1,000 Ukrainians, three-quarters of those refugees that have come to Australia over the last couple of years, and I think it is very important that we see that we support this community group. So I ask you, if you have time, and I know councils are very busy, or if you just want to advertise a Ukrainian community festival on Saturday to support their community, all the funds raised go back home on the ground to help their community through this awful war that is now going on, three years, next year four years, next February as well. So as I said, a very proud local councillor for the Ukrainian community, looking forward to Saturday myself, and ask all of you to make sure you can support it and advertise it through your community. Thank you.
Further speakers for general business. Councillor Strong.
Thank you, Chair. Listen, I've just got a couple of things that I want to talk about in GB, and the first one is to pick up on what councillor Howard said in regards to the India Day Fair that happened over this weekend. What a great turnout of the three levels of government, there was a lot of councillors, as councillor Howard said, and we even had a councillor from Logan that was there as well, he's always, he's a councillor, but he's also the mayor as well, and he came along as well. And there was some, the speeches were relatively short, because councillor, or the member for Oxy, the honourable Milton Dick, sort of let everyone know that he was going to do a short speech, and everyone else should do the same, and pretty much everyone followed that. But we did have a really rousing speech from Dr Maha Sarafandi, who spoke to us after receiving a lifetime achievement award from Gopio for the absolute commitment that he has to the Indian community, of course, and to the community of South East Queensland and Queensland as well, right? He has done so much, and when they read out a list of his achievements, gee whiz, that was, that took about a minute and a half just to read all the- took about a minute and a half just to read all of his achievement. He has done so much for the Ipswich area as well as Queensland and he's one of the greats and he's been honoured with that as well. As I say, it's the 79th year of independence, which is quite remarkable when you think that the first year was like 1944, 45? And there was some other things happening as well back then? But it's just quite an amazing journey that the Indian community and India has had right through to the present day. And I just want to pay my, I just want to give those accolades to the Indian community for all the work that they do here in Australia, their new home here in Queensland. I also want to speak in regards to the Brisbane Festival. We had a presentation recently in the committee and it was really, it was quite a good presentation. It sort of covered all the areas that Brisbane Festival will be in and doing. I asked if there was much happening in the suburbs and they assured me that there was. But when I went through, sadly when I went through what was available in my ward, I didn't get anything this year. I know. And Calum Vale didn't either. You got Brizasia. Oh, good on you, that was good. I'll take that under direction, sorry Chair. But I can report that the Gab Award, the Maruka Award, the Walter Taylor Award, the Winham Manly Award, the Tennyson Award and the Holland Park Award did very well. Anyways, listen, it's a great festival. I've been a recipient in my ward over the last three or four years of a number of events and I look forward to maybe having some more next year. Finally, I just want to pick up on comments that councillor Adams said in regards to the Ukraine and that war, which of course Russia doesn't say it's a war, I don't know, it's a military action or something, but it's been going for three and a half years. And what astounds me about the people of Ukraine is the fact that they have not asked one country to send any troops. All they ask for is the tools to fight the war. Now, when was the last time you heard that from a country that's actually fighting, well, it's almost a civil war really with Russia in a lot of respects, but fighting a war of aggression that they haven't asked, all they've asked for is the tools. And I just, it astounds me when I think about that, right? And sometimes the way they get treated by some politicians, right? And I won't mention who they are, but it's really great to see that the European Union has really got behind them. It looks like there may be some sort of, I don't know, I'm afraid to even say the word resolution, right? But it's just an amazing, a David and Goliath struggle that the Ukrainians have undertaken or were forced upon them and they have really appointed themselves so well.
councillor Strong, your time has expired. Further speakers, councillor Marks.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on just a couple of events that happened recently. One was actually in Logan, the Dad at the Chungtin Temple, and the other one was actually now in councillor Huang's ward at the Landmark Restaurant, of which I have spent many, 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 many a night there eating their food. So the first event was the Dad Dawn Fine Arts Exhibition. Now, this was an event that was arranged by Melody Chen and I know a lot of people in this chamber will know Melody Chen very well. She's renowned for organising these multicultural arts and events and does a magnificent job and has done it for many, many years. Unfortunately, she was sick on this particular afternoon, so wasn't able to attend this particular event. However, there were a number of other dignitaries there, namely the Mayor of Taichung, which is where the art came from. She obviously helped organise to bring it all over. Minister Lambroke, which was there as well, which was lovely because I have not had an opportunity to see the minister since he became the Minister of Education again. So it was absolutely delightful to catch up with him again. And then obviously there was a number of Logan councillors there. It's always nice to catch up with them and thank them for allowing me to attend their great city. And then of course the Lady Meris was there as well, which was lovely. It's always lovely to catch up with the Lady Meris when she is obviously out there and about, very busy all the time repping our fine city. They had some fabulous art, they had some art that I didn't think was fabulous, but then I guess, as they say, art is in the eye of the beholder, I think, or some such saying like that anyway. But yes, definitely, and some of the framework, I can tell you, the frames would have cost thousands of dollars, it was astonishing. But yeah, no, it was a great exhibition. The other one was the Singapore Club of Queensland 60th National Day and this is the event that took place in the Landmark Restaurant. And more importantly for that particular organisation, it was an opportunity to thank and farewell a committee member by the name of Susan Neve. She had been part of that committee for 19 of their 39 years that they had been going. I mean, 19 years as a committee and the last, I'm not sure how many, probably 10 as president. So a huge, huge commitment to the club and they were, you know, she's still going to be around of course, but it's time to hand over the baton to somebody else. Hopefully one of the other younger Singaporean members will take up the baton and continue as Susan started. And while Mayor John Raven was actually supposed to attend and represent the award to Susan on behalf of the Singapore Club, unfortunately he had to attend his brother's 40th birthday, so I had to put in his apologies and he was very sad. He said he'd much prefer to be with the Singapore Club than his brother. I don't know if he wants that out there publicly, but you know, that's it. But having said that, I had the honour of not only presenting a trophy to Susan, but the opportunity to read out this beautiful speech that I'm sad to say I didn't write, someone wrote it, but I got to read it out and it was just beautiful. It was really, really lovely. So whoever put the work into writing that speech, I take my hat off to you, it was fabulous. And Susan, I congratulate you on your 19 years in the committee and I wish you all the best moving forward with whatever you continue to do and hopefully I will see you around the trap somewhere. Thank you.
Point of order, Chair. Point of order councillor Dixon.
Chair, I move that council now adjourn for dinner for one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked.
It has been moved by councillor Dixon and seconded by councillor Givney that council adjourn for dinner for a period of one hour, which commences only when all councillors have vacated the chamber and the doors have been locked. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against, no. The ayes have it. The meeting will be adjourned when all councillors have left the chamber. Councillors, are there any further items of GB? General business. Councillor, sorry councillor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, Chair. I rise to speak on two items tonight, council's EBA, which I was spoken about in Finance Committee, but unfortunately the LNP gag on the meeting now precludes us from talking about all items in committee reports and also about the car park at Eleanora Park, if I have time. So council's EBA with this presentation, Certified Agreement Number 11 in the Finance and City Governance Committee last week. And it was lots of back patting about council's EBA during the presentation we had there and there was a few highlights, including the wage increase and the sign-on bonus, I guess, for want of a better term, and some limited increases in personally for reproductively. And so the outcome that council employees who are covered by the Certified Agreement Number 11 is a vast improvement to council's original offer to workers at the start of those negotiations. And to that end, I really want to congratulate the workers on sticking together and demanding a better offer from council and congratulate their unions for organising workplaces, work sites here in Brisbane City Council and fighting for workers' rights. If you need an example as to why workers need their unions here in council, this EBA is evidence of that. What we learnt is that, you know, I suppose those on this side of the chamber who don't have a pathological hate for unions understand how logs of claims are put together from a union side in terms of the bargaining. I asked a few questions about how council's log of claims was developed when they put that to council's workforce through their unions at the negotiating table. And the answer was a bit vague to start with, but we eventually got there, we eventually got there in that there are many stakeholders within council that the team, the CEO and the team who negotiate the EBA consult with, but they are given, and councillor Cunningham admitted this in the committee presentation, they're given what was referred to as guidance by ENC. So I can read into that, that none of the positions that council arrived at in their log of claims would have been signed off if it weren't for the guidance and I suppose direction of ENC, of the Lord Mayor and of LNP councillors. So what we know of council's log of claims, what they sought council's workforce to sign up for were things like a wage offer way below inflation with no backdated pay, well below the wage increase that councillors got, including back pay. Also in council's log of claims, changes to redundancy provisions and flexible work arrangements for workers as well. And they were some of the key sticking points, workers have told us, that council's position was most firm on. So they wanted to play around, they wanted to play around with workers' entitlements when they were exiting the organisation. Now, we sort of got this presentation to suggest that there was, there was all these great things in the EBA and I've got to say, it's certainly a better outcome for workers than was initially put forward by council and that's only because those workers stood up and they took action, they took industrial action the first time in a long time here in Brisbane City Council demanding more and they got more, but this shouldn't be like this. We shouldn't have council workers having to fight tooth and nail against an LNP administration that's giving directions to the council team that are negotiating this EBA and having to fight for everything that they are owed. I just want to talk very quickly now about the Winham Rugby Union Club, Winham Manly Touch Association and Winham District Netball Club, seeking to have a safe car park and road access to these clubs. Residents around Eleanora Park have seen their streets clogged by visitors coming to play, watching these three codes. The management of these clubs know this is a problem and they care and they've been seeking a resolution, but it shouldn't take them to get a petition up for council to understand what's happening there and what is needed. We certainly need a Lord Mayor and councillors that actually keep their eye on the ground of local issues.
councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Are there any further speakers to general business? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I rise to speak on an event that I attended two weekends ago on Sunday, which was the run to cure neuroblastoma. And this is a fun run organised by Neuroblastoma Australia and it's been held annually for the last 12 years in Sydney and Melbourne and this was its first year in Brisbane in the beautiful and iconic New Farm Park, in the wonderful Ward of Central Ward. And councillor Howard was there and she was fabulous as always and I was there too with my family, my husband and our two boys. My husband ran the 21 kilometres, which is pretty incredible, he's never done that before and I ran the one kilometres, one kilometre I should say, with my two little heroes, one of whom ran, the seven-year-old ran the whole way by himself, which was amazing and paced himself and my four-year-old sprinted, ran out of gas and asked to be carried the rest of the way, which I didn't do, I didn't give in. But it does have multiple events, the 21, the 10, the five, the three and the one. And there were so many people there, there were thousands of people there. It was an incredible morning that raised $170,000 to go towards neuroblastoma research. So for those who may not know, neuroblastoma claims more lives of children under the age of five than any other cancer. And the whole drive of this event is to raise more money, more funding to go into research so we can better understand this cancer and obviously prevent families from having to go through this horrible, horrible experience. It is a solid, what the, sorry, let me start again. The tumour affects the nerve cells, called neuroblasts, and these cells are commonly found in the adrenal glands above the kidney and affect all the tissues within the spinal cord. And the reason that we got involved in this is because my husband Gab's aunt and uncle, Susan and Peter lost their daughter 29 years ago to neuroblastoma. And she was only 18 months when she was diagnosed and she made it to three. And they have worked tirelessly to raise awareness of this horrible disease and to bring this event up here and they've participated in previous years down south and they wanted to make sure that Brisbane had it too. And what's really marvellous about it is the entire extended family went along and all of their friends and all of the nurses and healthcare workers and doctors that they've met through this process, they've remained so close to them over these years, over 30 years, and they too have involved and contributed to the event. And what was most special was there was another family there and that was Mackenzie's family and Mackenzie's intermission. And she's fighting the disease and it's thanks to the hard work of people like Susan and Peter who have raised money and are helping to put more funds into this important research. So to put into perspective, the average age of diagnosis is just two years old. The average five-year survival rate for aggressive neuroblastoma is 50% and a third of survivors of neuroblastoma have long-term side effects from the toxicity of the treatment. So it does impact a lot of families. It is a serious issue and it's wonderful that we see, we saw so many people there on Sunday supporting this event and raising money. And I've made a commitment that next year I might increase the run to three kilometres, maybe even five. And if I do, I would love to have all of my colleagues behind me to be able to, so I can really make it to the distance, but no.
Oh, he might be in front.
So if anybody for next year wants to participate, it was a marvellous day and honestly, it's such a good cause and one that's obviously very close to our hearts. Thank you very much.
Further speakers? No further speakers. Councillors, I now draw your attention to the notice of motion at item seven on the agenda. Councillor Collier, would you please move the motion?
Chair, I move that this council ceases paying for advertising on the Kyle and Jackie O Show.
Seconded.
Has been moved by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy that this council ceases paying for advertising on the Kyle and Jackie O Show. Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Chair. Ratepayers of Brisbane didn't sign up to be sponsors of shock jocks. Let's spend their money on Brisbane, not on boosting the brand of Kyle and Jackie O. I want to speak tonight about the continued use of Brisbane City Council funds to fund advertising during the Kyle and Jackie O program in Brisbane. I want to acknowledge the hard work and advocacy over many, many years of the MFW community who have brought this issue to my attention. I must admit, I'm not an avid commercial radio listener and wasn't aware of this until very recently. So thank you for their continued advocacy in this space. Every year, council spends millions and millions and millions of dollars on advertising and marketing. That is money collected from residents who expect it to be spent on the things that matter the most, things like constructing footpaths that they can push a pram on.
Point of order, Chair. Will councillor Collier take a question on who attended Kyle's wedding?
councillor Dixon, point of order now.
Will councillor Collier take a question on who attended Kyle's wedding?
No.
Councillor Collier.
Do I have the call?
You do.
Thank you. Every year, this council, this LNP council spends millions and millions and millions of dollars on advertising and marketing and that is money collected from residents who expect it to be spent on things that matter the most, constructing footpaths they can push a pram on, unlocking more housing supply, fixing dangerous intersection, picking up bins and staffing our libraries and not on subsidising content that is well-known for being racist, sexist, mean, divisive and often deeply disrespectful. Kyle and Jackie O have built a career on shock value. That is their brand, but ratepayers and residents of Brisbane should not be footing the bill to boost that brand. In fact, I think that many residents would and have.
Point of order. Will councillor Collier take a question?
One moment please councillors, point of order councillor Givney.
Will councillor Collier take a question on how much Labour's spending in the election advertising on the Kyle and Jackie O Show?
No.
No, thank you councillor Givney, councillor Collier. Councillor Collier will not.
I know that many residents in Brisbane feel quite disgusted to learn that their money is being spent in this way. I am one of them. Many have reached out to me since. Kyle and Jackie O's behaviour is not a one-off instances. It's a pattern of behaviour that targets people cruelly. Council in no way.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Parry.
Speaking of patterns of behaviour, how many times has the, through you, Madam Chair to councillor Collier, how many times has the Prime Minister been on Kyle's show?
Councillor, I don't uphold that point of order.
Point of order, Chair.
Councillor Collier.
Point of order, Chair.
Our point of order, councillor Cassidy.
There's just been three displays of unsuitable meeting conduct. The rules are very clear where they, you, if a council wants to ask a council question, they request that through you and then you put that to the councillor. So those three councillors have engaged in unsuitable meeting conduct and you should rule on that.
I made my ruling already, councillor Cassidy. And I asked councillor Collier, if you don't want to take that question, you may continue.
Chair, council is not obligated to advertise on any particular programme. We choose where we place ads. That means we can and we should choose to avoid placing them on shows that don't reflect the values of our community. Brisbane is diverse, it's respectful and it's a modern city. There are countless local outlets, local media outlets, community radio stations and ethical broadcasters that we could choose to partner with to promote council services and events. Choosing Kyle and Jackie O over these outlets sends exactly the wrong message about what we value as a council. Advertising is more than just a placement, it's an endorsement. When our logo and messages appear with their content, we are lending the credibility of the city of Brisbane to their brand. And in doing so, we are undermining our own reputation. At a time when residents are dealing with rising costs of living, delayed council projects, basic services under strain, all orchestrated by this LNP council, how can we justify spending residents of Brisbane's money to advertising during a show that so many people find offensive? Freedom of speech does not mean freedom from consequence, nor does it mean freedom from losing lucrative multimillion-dollar council contracts. We have an obligation to show leadership in how we spend the public's money. That means making choices that uphold the dignity of our city, reflect community expectations and deliver value for every advertising dollar. For these reasons, I really would hope that all councillors tonight would support my calls to get council to immediately stop purchasing advertising during the show. And the fact that we've been doing this proves that we need to review our media buying policies. Brisbane residents deserve better than this. Our city's reputation deserves better than this. And frankly, our budget priorities demand so much better than this.
Further speakers? Deputy Mayor.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak on this motion, which we will not be supporting today. Why won't we be supporting it, Madam Chair? Well, it's because that we don't believe it is right to say something in here, but then in private, in your caucus, do something else. Because that's exactly what Labour has done in moving this motion to criticise us, a team made of sixty-five per cent women when their house is not in order. The Labour opposition in this place is dominated by men. These are men who have referred to female LNP councillors as dogs and grubs. Week in, week out, they come into this place, Madam Chair, and they disrespect you. They accuse female councillors of shouting and sniping. They mock their hobbies and they shout over them. In fact, I'm sure every single woman on this side of the chamber can think of a time when a male Labour councillor has been shouted over, has shouted over them. Councillor Collier stays silent while all of this happens. I have thought very deeply about this motion, Madam Chair. And we, as a party room, have discussed this. Some of the statements referred to by councillor Collier are certainly something that I don't endorse. It's not my cup of tea and personally, I don't listen to it. In fact, I don't know anyone on our side of the chamber who does. But you know what? Plenty of people do.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Parry.
Will the deputy mayor take a question?
Will you take a question, Deputy Mayor, from councillor Parry?
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Is a deputy mayor aware of any advertising taken out on the Kyle and Jackie O show by the Labour Party?
Interesting question, councillor Parry. I'm sure that councillor Collier will certainly be advocating that no advertising is undertaken by Labour on the ARN in the future. But let me get back to the point, Madam Chair. Sometimes people don't like what's on the radio. Plenty of people don't like it. And if you're listening to the radio and you have a concern about the content that you're hearing, who do you contact? Not your local council, no. You contact the Federal Communications Minister, who is responsible for regulating commercial radio. And that's exactly what I encourage councillor Collier to do. In fact, she doesn't have to even take my word for it. She can ask Prime Minister Anthony Albanese, who she should contact, to discuss her concerns. He will tell her to raise it with the Communications Minister, Annika Wells, here in Brisbane. That's exactly what he did when he put these, when these questions were put to him in November twenty twenty-four. He referred them to Minister Michelle Rowland, who was the minister at the time. You know what? Since that time, Madam Chair, he's been back on that programme four times. Four times.
Point of order, Chair.
Point of order, councillor Dixon.
Chair, will councillor Cunningham take a question?
Councillor, Deputy Mayor, will you take a question?
Sure.
Yeah. Is the deputy mayor aware that the Prime Minister has appeared eleven times on the Kyle and Jackie O show?
Deputy Mayor.
Fascinating, eleven times. Well, I wasn't aware of that figure, but that's a big number. And I wonder if councillor Collier has shared her concerns with the Prime Minister about that. It's not the first time people have raised questions with him about whether the content on this show is appropriate. Yet each time, he deadbats it and he goes back on the show, endorsing its content and the character, the content and the character of that host. For heaven's sake, Madam Chair, he even attended the man's wedding. He offered to DJ at the man's wedding. It's really disappointing for me because it's so transparently hypocritical of councillor Collier to come in here and move this motion. She is a former Labour media adviser. She knows exactly how radio advertising works. She knows that we don't pick and choose which programmes are airing. She knows that we have no power to regulate or censor the content. And she knows that the men in her party clearly endorse it.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Givney.
Will the deputy mayor take a question?
Deputy Mayor, will you take a question?
Certainly, councillor Givney.
Is the deputy aware, aware if councillor Collier has shared these concerns with the former councillor Cara Cook and the new member for Bonner to raise this with the Prime Minister?
Deputy Mayor.
Well, I'm not aware, but thank you, councillor Givney. Because councillor, former councillor Cook says.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, your time has expired. Are there further speakers? No further speakers? We'll now put that to the vote. Oh, sorry, councillor Collier, my apologies. Councillor Collier, right of reply.
Thanks very much, Chair. And I guess today we have learned where the line is that the LNP will cross. We have learnt, we have learnt, and I've listened carefully to the debate today. Respectfully, the LNP's best argument that they've got is that if someone else does it, it's therefore okay. And it's, they're going to be fine. And if that is your best argument, and if this is the best argument from the LNP, then quite frankly, they're not fit to lead. Because the last five minutes, I have listened to the deputy mayor attack Labour, attack me directly and not actually take some responsibility and address what we are responsible for, what council can and should do, which is cease spending ratepayer money advertising this filth. The fact, it is simple. The facts are not in dispute. This show has one of the worst records when it comes, in Australian broadcasting, when it comes to breaching those decency standards. Nearly half of all radio complaints in this country last year.
Point of order.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Will councillor Collier take a question?
Well, councillor Collier, will you take a question from? No, councillor, councillor Collier.
Nearly half of all radio decency complaints in this country last year were about this one programme. That is not a coincidence, that is not a pattern. We're not talking about an isolated slip-up from years ago. Their history speaks for itself. The live lie detector stunt where a fourteen-year-old girl realised that, revealed that she'd been sexually assaulted. The dearly deported stunt, separating two Vietnamese sisters for laughs. The concentration camp joke in parentheses about Magda Sibansky. Repeated vulgar content broadcast in school-run hours. These aren't harmless pranks and council has the opportunity today to do the right thing and pool ratepayers' money from funding this.
Point of order, Deputy Mayor.
Claim to be misrepresented.
I note your claim. Councillor Collier.
These aren't harmless pranks. Advertising is not neutral. When our logo appears alongside this programme, we are saying that we endorse this. And when this brand is known for cruelty, exploitation, repeated breaches of decency, that credibility suffers. I have also heard from the deputy mayor just now that this is business as usual for council marketing. But marketing choices are exactly that, they are choices. We are free to decide where we advertise. We can choose to support local, ethical, community-focused media outlets instead of sending money to a programme that's not based in Brisbane with this track record. I support more radio jobs being based in Brisbane. Through you, Chair, does the deputy mayor? Do you, Deputy Mayor? I don't think so. This comes down to a simple question. Do we want the people of Brisbane's money collected in good faith to improve their suburbs, spent on promoting our events during a show that time and time again has crossed a line on the basic standards of respect and decency? Our residents expect better, they deserve better and our reputation deserves better. I also recall back in twenty fourteen, councils, and this will show council's double standard. Back in twenty fourteen, a poster for the queer film festival showing two gay men embracing on a beach was banned by Brisbane City Council. And what did councillor?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order, councillor Adams.
She's misleading the chamber, that is totally incorrect, as the chair of the time.
Refer to councillors by their correct name too, please, councillor Adams. Councillor Collier.
Point of order, councillor Collier is totally incorrect, that is not correct.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Collier.
Chair, at the time councillor Adams assured Brisbane, assumed that Brisbane would find this image, quote, unquote, too confronting. Councillor Adams, through you, Chair, you said that. Well, if you thought that it was going to be too confronting, perhaps you should tune into the Kyle and Jackie O show and reflect how you feel about ratepayers' money being spent on this. I say yet again, let's stop funding advertisements on the Kyle and Jackie O show. Let's invest those dollars into channels that reflect the values we want for our city. Respect inclusivity and community pride. And I want to table today a dossier of all of the things that Kyle and Jackie O have said, some of the most offensive things, so that the people of Brisbane know that their money is directly funding this sort of content. Please, let's stop sponsoring shock jocks and start investing in media that reflects the respect and modern values that our city deserves. Ratepayers did not sign up to be sponsors of this sort of content. Let's spend their money on the people of Brisbane.
Deputy Mayor, your point of misrepresentation.
Councillor Collier said that we sponsored the show, we don't sponsor. We advertise with one of the largest commercial radio networks in Australia. We do not sponsor or endorse the content.
Councillors will now put the motion to the vote. All those in favour say aye?
Aye!
Those against no?
No!
Division.
The noes have it. Division called by councillor Collier and seconded by councillor Cassidy. Ayes to my right and noes to my left. Clarks, please ring the bells. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the noes have it, the voting being five in favour and sixteen against.
That motion has lost. Councillors, that now concludes the meeting.